Good evening. I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees at 7:00 PM on June 17th, 2025. Thank you for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public and we welcome everyone and thank you for participating in public education. Please join Bianca Knight in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. And let's have a moment of silence. All right. To learn a bit more about the student who led us in the pledge tonight, I'm going to turn it over to our Executive Director of Engagement, Equity, and Access, Erin Peralos.
Well, thank you, President Chapa. I almost don't think I need my notes this evening because I think I've known Bianca and her family since she was a year old, but I'm going to use my notes here just in case. She is a rising seventh grader, having just completed her sixth grade year at Butler Elementary, and she's going to be attending Shackelford Junior High. She's here with her parents, Ron and Claire Knight. I also see that Principal Basham from Butler is here as well. And some fun facts about Bianca is that her favorite subject is reading. She really loves homemade spaghetti and meatballs. And a really fun fact is she has a passion. Her passion in life is ballet. In fact, she would love to live life in pointe shoes and a tutu if she could. And at Butler Elementary, she was very involved in the DI team and UIL oral reading and on the Safety Patrol. And outside of school, she volunteers at her church, Most Blessed Sacrament, and is a regular altar server. She is also the biggest cheerleader for her older sister's activities. Well, since you're such a great cheerleader, we want to cheer you and say thank you for sharing your leadership this evening and leading us in the pledge. Thank you, Bianca.
Thank you, Bianca. The first part of our agenda tonight is recognitions. And after our recognitions for the evening, which includes a ratification item, we will take a short recess for pictures and celebrations in the boardroom and lobby, and you are all invited to join in on that. Recognition Item A tonight is for our Destination Imagination Team, Dr. Smith.
I'm excited to welcome Dr. Karen Zeskey up tonight. There she is. I couldn't see you behind the podium for a second. And she'll take it over from here.
Good evening, President Chapa, board members, Dr. Smith. It's my delight to be here this evening to share that four outstanding teams from Arlington ISD recently participated in the Destination Imagination Global Finals, an international competition that challenges students to solve complex, open-ended problems in the areas of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. These students represented our district with incredible creativity, collaboration, and perseverance on a global stage. From Gunn Junior High, the Divas and the Dude placed seventh out of 34 teams in the Technical Challenge, Breaking Point. And Duck Duck DI placed 16th out of 42 teams in the Scientific Challenge, Worlds Beyond. From Corey Academy, DI Avocados or DI Vocados placed ninth out of 43 teams in the Elementary Scientific Challenge, Worlds Beyond. And from Butler Elementary, DI No Nuggies placed 25th out of 35 teams in the Fine Arts Challenge, Less is More. Please join me in celebrating these exceptional students, their coaches, and their families. They've made Arlington ISD proud on the global stage. I believe we have a video that highlights their experience. We have here this evening principals, parents, and students who made this amazing trek, and they're here to be honored by all of you. So, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Zeskey. Destination Imagination is a big deal. I did not know what Destination Imagination was for a long time. We didn't have it here in the district when I grew up. But when I was a teacher down in South Texas, I learned really quick that Destination Imagination was a big deal down there. And so, when my students started here in the district and we found out we had Destination Imagination, I was so excited about that. It is such a wonderful program that teaches kids about creativity and also gives them the chance, especially if they go to globals, to meet people from around the world. And this is not like, if you've got kids in competitions and sometimes you go to state and it's like just this little competition, or you might go to globals and it's really, it's just, it's Texas. This is not that. State is a big state competition. globals truly involves folks from all around the world. So, congratulations to the teams that made it. You represent us very well. To have four teams make it to globals from one district is a big deal. I just can't overstate that. So, congratulations to y'all.
Mr. Chapa, if we could, could we have the teachers and the principals please stand up so we can give you a round of applause as well that are in the audience? We know that in order to make these things happen for our kids, it takes the adults in the room too. So, any teachers or principals, please stand up too. Parents and students and staff members on this topic, I want to point out one thing. These things aren't measured on STAR test scores, and it adds to the experience that we want for kids in Arlington ISD. So, thank you for trusting us to do great things with your kids. Thank you for our teachers and staff members for dedicating your time, your effort, and your energy into creating life-changing experiences for kids and students. I can almost guarantee when you're telling stories when you're our age and you're talking about things, you'll probably remember the DI Vocados and things like that and tell your friends and your family all about those things. So, congratulations to all of you and thank you for representing Arlington ISD so well.
We want to meet all of you and celebrate with you, and we'll do that in just a few moments during our recess. We do have one more recognition item that is also on the agenda as a appointments ratification item, but under state law, before we do that, we have to, because we're going to vote on it, we have to take an open forum for agenda items. So, Mrs. Acosta, do we have any speakers on the agenda tonight for open forum?
President Chapa, we do not.
Okay. We will move on to appointments then. Turn it over in a moment to Dr. Smith, but first I'll ask the board, do we have a motion to ratify the appointments of the individuals that were discussed in closed session?
Motion.
Have a motion for Ms. Richardson. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second for Ms. McMurro. We'll now move on to vote. All seven trustees voting in the affirmative. The motion carries unanimously. I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
All right. This is the exciting part. I am excited to welcome, I am excited to welcome Dr. Janine Caldwell as the Assistant Principal for Larson Elementary. Please give her a round of applause. Dr. Caldwell, you can come on up while I'm reading some fun things about you. Dr. Caldwell holds an advanced degrees in educational leadership and education law, including a Doctor of Education from Dallas Baptist University and a Master of Legal Studies from Texas A&amp;M University. She brings over two decades of experience in public education and higher education, currently serving as an instructional facilitator in Arlington ISD and as an adjunct professor at the University of North Texas. Her leadership roles span multiple districts with expertise in school improvement, instructional leadership, early learning, and curriculum coordination. Dr. Caldwell, welcome to the administrative team and welcome to Larson.
Thank you so much, President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith. I want you to know how grateful I am, so ecstatic to be serving the Larson community. As a product of Larson, this couldn't be a more special appointment for me, and it's deeply personal. To my friends that are here, Dr. Lee, thank you for being my champion throughout this whole school year. Thank you, Mr. Topser and Mr. Boyd, for trusting me to lead alongside you and the Larson staff to serve our students well. And most importantly, thank you to the Larson staff, a resilient group of wonderful educators who are passionate about making a difference for our students. Thank you to all of my friends and family who are here, my parents, my closest friends. I could not have gotten here today without you. Thank you for being my cheerleaders in every way and just riding this wave along with me. And I just want to say with a heartfelt thank you again for everything, and I'm glad to get started with the work.
Excellent. Please give Dr. Caldwell one more round of applause. I am also excited to welcome Estefania Gomez, Assistant Principal at Thornton Elementary. Please give her a round of applause while she comes on up. Ms. Gomez is, boy, I'm having a hard time tonight. Ms. Gomez is an experienced bilingual educator and instructional leader with a Master of Education in Educational Leadership from the University of Texas at Arlington. She currently serves as an Assistant Principal in Grand Prairie ISD and has over a decade of experience supporting student success as a teacher, mentor, and instructional coach. Her expertise spans K-5 content areas with a strong foundation in bilingual education and instructional support. Ms. Gomez, welcome to the team.
President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith, it is an honor and excitement to be able to stand here today and officially accept the role of AP at Thornton. This is not only professional, but a personal. Returning to Arlington ISD, which is the district that shaped me as a child, I want to thank my family, my husband, my three children, my close friends and family, because without them, I'm not able to serve as a leader. I also want to give credit to aspiring leaders. Kristy Wilks, Principal at Beckham, Karen Hicks, Principal at Sheridan. Their mentorship began in Grand Prairie ISD and now continues here in Arlington. Ms. Evelyn Gaspad, Principal at Webb, Albert Becerra, AP at Spear, and Candace McCartney, Principal at Garcia. They are my cheerleaders, and I'm honored to call them friends. And now to my Thornton, my new work family. Ms. Rodriguez, thank you for trusting me with this opportunity to make a difference at Thornton. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves, get ready, and proudly serve the community at Thornton. Thank you.
Congratulations to our pointees tonight. It is 7:15. We'll now take a brief recess. Trustees, let's aim to be back in about 10 minutes. We are now in recess. We are back from recess. I'm going to change the order up just a little bit tonight in recognition of the fact that we have quite a packed agenda. I noticed that we have one speaker registered for non-agenda forum tonight, and they are already here. So, rather than have them wait perhaps many hours for their chance to speak, I'm going to move to that portion of the agenda right now. Ms. Acosta, who do we have registered for non-agenda forum tonight?
We have one speaker.
Okay. I have Mr. Cryle. Mr. Cryle, as you walk down, I'm just going to say that you have been here many times, and I know you're familiar with the rules, and so I will dispense with giving them to you, but you will have three minutes from the time you start speaking.
President Chapa, board, good evening. Appreciate it, Dr. Smith. It's been a few months since I've been down here. I want to put a few things on your guys' radar, so that's why I'm down here. June 15th, TAD should have sent out the preliminary budget. If you haven't gotten it yet, it should be coming here real soon. With that in mind, they have to approve their budget by September 15th. Their next meeting is August 13th. Just keep in mind, if you guys want to vote to disapprove of their budget, you have 30 days from the day they pass it. The preliminary budget shows an increase of 1.1%, so that's what they plan right now to raise it. Another thing I want to talk to you about, I think the secret's out on SB 973. If you're not aware of Senate Bill 973, if you read it, it doesn't have anything to do with the Appraisal District, but the amendment that was added by Representative Guerin is trying to attach appraisals, and anytime you adopt an appraisal plan to require appraisals to be done on January 1. It's at the governor's desk right now. He has until the 22nd to take action on it. And the last reason I want to speak to you is I sent y'all an email, and in that email is the attachment for the vote allocations for this year. Now, normally you get this in September, but it's early this year. So, you're going to have 160 votes. So, the 5% threshold for this year for the two appointment positions is 100. So, you'll be up for your, to vote in your first two meetings again. But why is it here? Well, earlier this year, I read the Property Tax Code, Chapter 6, and don't waste your time. It'll put you to sleep. But as I was reading through it, I noticed something. I noticed that the conservation districts can participate in the appointment process. So, I started digging around and found out that they've never participated. Since 1979, none of them have participated. So, I started speaking to the Water District in February. And at the February meeting, I mean, at the May meeting, the Water District chose to act, and they will now be involved in this year's appointment process. With that, they're going to bring in Veridian and a couple of these other smaller districts, and it's too much for me to get into how this all works. But the gist of it is they're nominating periods right now. So, they're going to start nominating people by July 14th at 11:59 PM. Their nomination has to be in, and then they're going to have a little vote amongst themselves by August 15th. And then their nominee will be placed on the ballot with the cities and schools nominees, and they're all going to vote in the November time. So, y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cryle. The next portion of our agenda tonight, our committee and staff reports. Our first report tonight is a report from our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
I'm honored to welcome Mr. Horn up tonight. He's going to introduce our Chair of our Citizen Bond Oversight Committee for our report this evening.
President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith, it's my great honor to introduce our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and I'm going to dispense with a lot of the detail because you'll get some of it here in just a bit. But I just wanted to thank them for the great work that they do, and many of you have served on the committee with us, and they provide great insight and oversight into our projects and the work that we do with our projects and also the financial side of things. And so, this evening, I'm going to introduce our chairperson, Ms. Catherine Parr, and she'll come up and deliver our report tonight.
Thank you, Kelly. Good evening, President Chapa, Dr. Smith, trustees. I know all of you, but for those who don't know me, I am Catherine Parr. I am a very involved North Arlington parent. I have a little one at Butler and two girls that are not at Shackelford anymore and will be entering as freshmen at Lamar High School next year, which we're really excited about. I have served in other capacities throughout the district. I've been on the Site Base Committee at Shack. I've served as President of Booster Clubs, very involved in the PTA. I also participate and am recently going to join the Board of Arlington Education Foundation, which I'm really excited about. So, definitely have some experience. This is my first year as Chair of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and I know it's not lost on me. I have big shoes to fill. Mr. Finnicum and Mr. DeKane did a great job over the last several years, definitely leading our committee well, and so hopefully I fill those shoes well tonight. I am honored to be here and present the Fourth Annual Report to the Board. So, we'll just review the purpose of the committee, then look at the composition of the committee, our schedule, our meeting schedule. We'll go through the charges, look at the expected outcomes of the bond, and then some thanks at the end. So, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee is established to provide transparency and enhance public confidence in the use of proceeds from the sale of bonds authorized by AISD by our voters. The purpose of the committee is to provide findings and recommendations to the Board of Trustees relating to the expenditure of bonds, proceeds authorized in the 2019 bond election, the progress of the 2019 bond program, and the ways the district can maximize the potential of the bond program. And that is why we are here tonight, to present those findings and recommendations. The entire charge set forth by you all to our committee is actually pretty lengthy and detailed. However, at the end, it specifically addresses a few key points that should be covered in this presentation, and so we're going to focus on those tonight. It would like us to address and assess the budget status, assess bond progress, hub utilization, communication to stakeholders, and then any findings and or recommendations to the bond program and recommendations on significant changes in scope or use of surplus funds proposed by the administration. So, we're going to focus on those items, as well as we had a meeting, our last meeting, where we did a workshop of discussing what we wanted presented at this presentation, and there were some key items that continued to come up, not just in that meeting, but throughout the year, that the committee members really, it seemed like, were really important to them, and so I wanted to focus on those tonight. So, the committee composition did change slightly this year from last year. We do now have 15 members and then two alternates, and then we also have our SLAB members, which are our students, one from each high school, and then we have, they have a president who has also been very involved in the CBOC. I would like to take a minute to recognize we have a few other committee members here tonight, Vice Chair Adam Baker, Darla Peznell, and Vanna Shaw-Stines, if y'all would just stand or wave. Thank y'all so much for being here. So, just to kind of go over the composition, we do think that the number of members that we currently have is sufficient. We don't know, we don't believe that there should be any added or taken away. 15 felt like a good number, and we are happy to report that we had a really good turnout this year. Attendance was great. So, that was, that was really great to see. We would recommend continuing to recruit and appoint community and staff members from all across the district so that we maintain diversity on the committee, bringing in people and individuals from all parts of the city. That way, they have their insight from their community that can be shared as a collective. And also, continue to seek out members who are dedicated to serving and can commit to attending the meetings. It's really important that we have our committee members in attendance so that we can have those discussions and make sure that we are all there to hear the information presented and then go, go back to the community and share that. The SLAB students have been fantastic. Their addition has been so wonderful. They always bring such insight that we or staff members don't always see, and so it's nice to hear from them and look at it from their perspective. I do want to just briefly say, one example, Cara Peterson actually brought forth a presentation at one of our meetings. She had recognized something, she's a Lamar High School student, and she had recognized that there's not a lot of parking in the area close to the MAC for Lamar students, and it's quite a walk to the parking lot. And so, she brought a full proposal to share with us a way that could maybe be remedied in a future bond or if there are leftover funds from this bond, just for it to be evaluated. And so, it was fantastic to have that insight from her and really proud of her for stepping up and sharing that with the committee. There you see our meeting schedule. We do meet quarterly and then present usually during June to the board. We would, one recommendation we had, it seemed like this year, we didn't have a specific orientation for new members. And so, we think that it would be beneficial to do that even in a small group, just with the new members, with Kelly, with myself, to go over terminology, just kind of a general viewpoint of what does a bond entail? How did we get here? That kind of stuff. Because a lot of the members are, they are repeat members, right? This isn't the first year, and so they've heard all of that, and so it's just kind of repetitive for all of the rest of the committee to hear that information again, and I feel like we could incorporate another topic and cover something else instead of just those kind of minute details of vocabulary and such. And so, I talked to Kelly about that, and we're going to work on that to make that happen for the coming year. And then we also, so we do go visit, most of our meetings are at one of the schools that are under construction or has been completed. So, this year, we went to Short Elementary, Bailey Junior High, Duff Elementary, Arlington High, and now we're here. One thing that we've discussed that might be of benefit, because the committee really enjoys those onsite visits. You really get to see what it is that's taking place, and especially when you see it during construction and then at the completion, it really paints that full picture for you. So, maybe incorporating some site visits that are not associated with a meeting in between our quarterly meetings, that are obviously optional, but make them open for those that would like to attend and just get a little more onsite visits going on. So, speaking of, we did get to go to Arlington High. That was our last, where we held our last meeting. Mrs. Umblez is fantastic and gave a very candid tour and showed us all the new facilities, the library, the new science labs, and she also explained what it was like in that transition period when there was a lot of construction going on and how they managed that as a school, how the students did with that. And it was just fantastic to hear that teamwork that the students and the staff were all able to come together to make it work, and now they have this beautiful facility to enjoy. And so, we really enjoyed, we actually went there last year when it was under construction, and so getting to see the final product was, was great. and so getting to see the final product was great. We also went to Bailey Junior High, which we visited also last year while under construction, and then we got to go back and see the final product this year. They've got a beautiful new entryway office. We saw the storm shelter and how that works. The cafeteria is amazing, and it's really interesting to see how the architects and the planning of it and what, thinking outside the box. So because Bailey has their football field, like, pretty close to the school, and it actually backs up right behind where the cafeteria is, they were able to put a concession stand right there in the cafeteria that opens up to the field, which is so innovative and just really utilizes the space well. So that was great to see. And they also closed in the corridor. They have like, they had an outdoor corridor that really was impacted when there was bad weather, hot, cold, raining. The kids could go, you know, they were open to the elements. And now that's been enclosed, which just, I'm sure helps the staff with containing the kids, and it just makes it a better environment when they're transitioning between classes. Okay, so now we're going to get to the charges. These first four charges, I'll be honest, I'm not going to go over a whole lot. The first one talks about looking at the Capital Needs Steering Committee and their report and what was intended for this bond. The point two, review the process used to solicit, qualify, and select design professionals. Review reports on the current status and plan of implementation of the bond to determine whether such status and implementation are consistent with bond program approved by the voters. And then the last one is regarding budget and expenditures. What I can say is Mr. Horn and his staff have done a fantastic job at presenting and being transparent about this information. Each one of our meetings pretty much revolves around these topics, and they do a great job of just sharing with us what, where we are on the budget, where we are on bond projects. And so we would just recommend continuing that transparency. They were available to answer all of our questions. And so, I mean, I just can't say enough good things about Kelly and his team and how well they prepare for these meetings and provide that information to us. Okay, the core of all the charges is where we really had a lot of discussion in our meetings. So the first one is hub utilization. In 2014, our hub utilization was an average of 7.5%. It increased to 21.5% in 2020, and we are currently at 25%, which is fantastic. We would say to continue looking at past vendor hub performance when we're selecting new contracts. Also, continue to participate in hosting minority contractor events. And then the last thing was to provide the hub participation and growth from the beginning of 2014 through where we are now and make that publicly available, which definitely, Kelly said that we can make that available on the website, and that would be an easy ask. One of the things that I did want to point out that we've, we talked about, that the goal of utilizing hubs is to make those businesses grow, right? To make them not be an underutilized business anymore. And so at some point, you do, we will probably reach a plateau because those businesses are going to hopefully grow, and then they won't qualify as a hub anymore. Hopefully, there will be new businesses, but at some point, that might plateau. And so there was a discussion of, well, should we raise it again? Should we make our standards higher? One, I think that would require a big survey and a project to look and see, you know, what was happening around us, which costs money. And so maybe that's something to consider for the next bond. But for right now, I think we are clearly surpassing our goal, and so I think staying there and, you know, just being cognizant of what is happening around us, what are other districts setting their hub utilization goals at? Just making sure that we stay online with that. Charge number six looks at audits. So internal and external audits were provided to the CBOC, and they demonstrated benefit, like, we've seen significant benefit in doing the audits. So obviously, we recommend continuing to do those and then present the findings to the CBOC as needed. Okay, charge seven is about communication. Communication is like one of the favorite topics in the CBOC committee. How do we get the information about the scope of the bond out to the community? And look, our website, I think, is fantastic. I think that all the information about the bond and what is happening and where we are can be found on the website. The problem is, how do we let everyone else know that the website's there and where to find that information? So like I said, we think that the district communications are effective, and they provide great detail on the current and future projects. These are just some ideas. Try and leverage individuals and content creators, teachers, students, to try and use their social media platforms to distribute the information. Using our SLAB students, obviously, they're the connoisseurs of social media, so, you know, letting them, giving them the autonomy to share that information with, not just the students, but with the community. Also, I mean, we love that there's multiple languages. You know, you can go to the website, you can change the language to whatever, Vietnamese, Spanish. That is all great because it meets our community where they are. And then possibly promoting community visits, meet and greets, ribbon cutting ceremonies. You know, the thing is, those things are, we do a good job of communicating them. You know, that's open to the public, right? So it's just encouraging the community to come out, to see those things, because, like I said, we love to go to the sites and see what are we building? Where is our money going and actually seeing it? And so I think that, you know, if we can get the community there and see it firsthand, and then they have a better idea of what's actually happening. Us as a committee, I think personally, as our charge, our biggest thing is for us to communicate. Like, aside from just being a voice in our meeting, we have to go out as community members, and when somebody says, oh, they haven't done this, you know, to whatever school, oh, you know what, this is coming along, and point them in that direction. So I have encouraged our committee members to do that and take that charge and be that voice. We are very excited also to have our new Chief Communications Officer, Ms. Norrington, and so hopefully she can help us brainstorm some ideas, other ways that we might not be thinking of. Would love if she could attend a meeting. Like I said, this is one of the, one of the very, very popular topics that comes up during our meetings, is how best to get the information about what's happening in the bond out to the community. So those are some of our suggestions for that. Okay, charge eight and nine kind of go hand in hand. Charge eight is having, making sure that the degree of satisfaction with key stakeholders with the quality of work and impact of the bond projects, and then conducting onsite campus and facility visits related to the projects as necessary. So like I said, we have, we want to continue to conduct committee visits to the projects, both under construction and completed. I already mentioned scheduling visits to those projects between regular meetings. CBOC members received, we did receive positive feedback from staff at each of the sites. Like I said, you know, when we go to those sites, having the principal there to explain, you know, this is how we've, this is how this change has impacted us on a day-to-day basis really creates a big picture. Robust communications of bond projects continue to evolve with committee input and then continue providing detailed information necessary to educate the committee. So like I said, we do really enjoy those site visits and just continue to do those. Encourage our community members, you know, to go to the schools when there is like a ribbon cutting and whatnot, for them to also see those. And then the last three charges, number 10 is for us to vote, which we did. We voted on the findings and recommendations that were presented today. Report to the Board, which is happening now. And then coordinate with the superintendent to maintain a presence on the ASD website, which I already mentioned. The website is fantastic. Ryan has done a fabulous job. He's at all our meetings, taking pictures of all of the projects that are happening and making sure that they're up there. So just really fantastic job on the website. This is a new and anticipated Joey Rodriguez Junior High, which we haven't had the opportunity to visit just yet, but it is, we are going to be visiting it soon, and we're very much looking forward to that. So just some pictures for visualization. All right, and now this is probably my favorite part of the presentation. The main purpose of this bond was to create advanced opportunities for students, increase safety and security, and improve accessibility. And I believe we are well on our way to accomplishing all of those things. So as far as expanded programming, we implemented district-wide full-day pre-K for all. One example of this that was impacted for the bond was the expansion of Crowe Elementary. They added 10 classrooms for kindergarten and pre-K, and that has been completed. There's been massive expansions and renovations to Gunn Junior High and Arlington High, our two dual-language fine arts academies, and those are also completed. Expansion of the Career and Technical Program, the CTC, adding eight to 10 labs, and that is in progress. That work is about to begin, or maybe already did. Okay. So we are definitely expanding programming, educational adequacy. So we have accessible elementary school playgrounds. It's so nice to drive around Arlington and see the same playground on every elementary school campus that is accessible to all children. I think that is one of the things like the community as a whole has noticed because it is such a visible thing, and you can just see it as you drive past. And so, you know, that was huge. They have the kindness benches at each one. The fine arts and athletic facility updates across the district. The updating the performance areas and lighting at all junior highs. New band trailers, uniforms, instruments to rent at no cost for all. Building of a third stadium, Glasby Field, which is currently well under construction. And then mirroring that stadium at Cravens and Willamette. Hopefully, that construction will begin this fall. And fully functional softball fields at all high schools. Utilization of facilities. So there was a lot of consolidation and replacement of older facilities that's taken place. So construction and replacement of Webb, which is completed. Consolidation of Berry and Rourke, and that is the new Berry Elementary. Thornton and Knox Elementary were consolidated into just Thornton. And then the new construction of Joey Rodriguez to replace Carter Junior High. The Food and Nutrition Services and Security Transportation Health Services, they're getting a new replacement service center, and it is currently in progress. And then also, a big thing, reducing, this is, I think this is something else that community members notice just by driving by, is the reduction of temporary buildings. So portable buildings have gone from 176 to 26. And I personally, I mean, my kids did go to Shack, so obviously I was driving by there the other day, but I was ecstatic to see those portables being moved. It just, and it just opens up even more space. It just makes the aesthetic of the school just that much better. Facility condition improvements. So these are like lifecycle and condition deficiencies, like new lighting, HVAC, new HVAC systems. These are the things that people don't see, but are absolutely necessary, right? And Kelly has even been very transparent with us that there are times when, like, an HVAC system goes down in a school, and it was not that time for that HVAC to be replaced, but we're not going to let our kids just sit in this heat, right? So that becomes a priority, which it should. And then, of course, safety and security. New fencing, new keying across the district, and new buses, storm shelters, security cameras. Definitely making sure that our campuses are safe and secure for our staff, for our kids. So one last thing, as we near the completion of this almost $1 billion bond, it is apparent that the changes being made are meeting the needs of the entire community, and we will have a lasting impact on thousands of students. Our committee is proud to be a small part of the process. With a projected completion date of December 2027, we, as a committee, are prepared to evaluate and start making recommendations for the use of any remaining funds. We would also like to suggest that the Board consider involving the past, current, and future members of the committee when the discussion of facility next steps for future bonds starts to take place. Now, just to thank all of you. I definitely want to thank Secretary Richardson, Trustee Mike, and Trustee Haynes for being at our meetings. Y'all's voice is incredibly beneficial. Having your insight really, I think, helps the committee members better understand things, better understand what y'all do. And so I just want to say thank y'all, thank you to y'all for being at our meetings. And thank you to the rest of the trustees for all that you do, for making sure that this bond is exactly what it is supposed to be. And lastly, thank you to the administrative staff. Dr. Smith, thank you so much for leading us and being a voice, being at our meetings as well. It does not go unrecognized when you are there. We know you're a busy man, so thank you. Definitely want to thank Kelly Horn. He, I can't say enough good things about the presentations that he prepares for us and just really transparent, answers all of our questions, does a great job of giving us the tours, and really does a great job of leading us. And all of the administrative staff, so many of them have shown up to meetings and given their input, and we just really appreciate it. So that's all I have, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Parr. Trustees with comments and questions? We'll go first to Ms. Haynes.
Thanks. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you and Adam for co-chairing and the rest of the committee for the work that you put into this year. I don't want to speak for Trustee Richardson or Trustee Mike, but I know that the meetings that we all attended were enjoyable. It was refreshing to listen to you guys actively engage in the information and be able to digest it quickly, which I think was evident in your presentation tonight. You speak very eloquently about our bond program, and so I think that's a testament to Kelly and his presentations that he's giving at these committee meetings. And the recommendations very closely mirror the discussions that we were a part of. And so that was very pleasant to see, that you guys were able to put those into words and put that out to the community so that they know what we were discussing at those meetings. So. meetings. So thank you so much. I look forward to serving with you guys again next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Mr. Wilbanks.
Thank you, President Chapa, and thank you, Ms. Parra, and Mr. Baker, and the whole committee. Justin and I, before we were doing this gig, we started on system bond oversight committee, so I know how rewarding the work can be. And I just want to say thanks for your presentation. It was great. Also, you had some great recommendations in there. Doing the new member orientation is something we used to do, and I think there were some of the seasoned veterans that would, not going to out myself, but a few of the seasoned veterans would come because Kelly did such a great job orienting them, and it was good to get a refresher. So Kelly, thanks for reviving that, that that is going to be a big improvement, I think. And then the site visits outside of regular meetings. There's a lot of great facilities out there, and getting you guys out and, and really getting back, seeing the buildings in action now that they're open would be a good field trip. So, and one I personally would like to tag along on. But again, thank you, guys. Important work, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. Any other comments or questions from trustees? I just, Dr. Smith, go ahead.
I just had a question. Dr. Parra, I wanted, I just wanted to know, you mentioned the SLAB students in all of this, and I love the fact that you said that they were a wonderful addition to the committee. We don't want to just be mid in Arlington ISD, so do you have any recommendations for expanding the SLAB student involvement in the CBAC or in, in any of these other committees for the future?
I, I think it's great to always get the students involved, right? These are their schools, and, and they are there every day. I would say I would maybe not use just the SLAB, maybe if there's another leadership board that could be, mostly because these students that are on these committee, on the SLAB or any of the leadership, they're so involved. And so it is, you know, sometimes difficult for them to make all of the meetings, and so having them being added to another committee might, might be, be just too much for them to be able to logistically attend. But maybe another leadership committee, you know, I don't know, I know that like the Richard Greer Scholars, like, maybe they could be, you know, be on another committee. I don't know if that's helpful at all, but I definitely think having the students' voices is incredible. They always have some enlightening, like, piece of information that all of us are like, oh, we would have never thought of that, you know? And so I, I would definitely look into, suggest looking into that.
I just have a couple comments and questions. My first comment is the hub utilization aspect of your presentation. I think that that's really important, and Mr. Wilbanks already brought up that, that he and I kind of go way, way back to the '09 CBOC with, with some of this stuff. And we were part of the first discussion to include hub utilization as a metric as part of something that the CBOC, I think it was the 14 CBOC at that point, looked into. And that was somewhat of a controversial thing at the time, but it happened, and, and I think the name, the numbers you gave show why it was needed, because part of the discussion back, back then was, we're already doing outreach efforts, we're already making an effort to do this, you know, we think we're doing a good job, and, and the number that you gave was initially in 2014, we were at about 7% hub utilization. And I think that we're a great example of how, if you're intentional about it, if you go above and beyond what you think you're already doing, you can see real results from it. So going from 7% hub utilization to now 25%, and, and these are, these are, this is hard to do, because there's different aspects of construction, like, there's some hubs that specialize in one, you know, one area more than they do another, and there may be more hubs available for one type of work than another. And so asking our staff to take on the responsibility for trying to make that a priority for us is a big lift, but our staff's done such a great job, and, and thanks to Mr. Horn and his staff for doing that, because this is not, this is not going out and finding subpar people and giving them some contracts so we can say that we can do it. These are folks who, who can do the job. I mean, this is a competitive process, and we're only hiring people who can do the work. And I think we show that just by going out and making a more intentional effort of finding people who are qualified to do this work and can do this work, and bringing them in and giving them the opportunity, they do fantastic work.
Yep.
And so I'm glad that we are part of that process. I hope we continue to do that. On the external audit point, I had a question about, I know that that's also started some, some years ago. Do we have a sense of the magnitude of the savings that we've been able to realize, at least in y'all's review of the, the external audits that have been done on these projects?
Do we have a number?
No.
Yes.
Or maybe a good example of some, you know, some savings we realized from that?
We typically, you know, the, what I can say is that the cost of the, of the associated audits has always recovered. Generally, we've not had one where we haven't at this point. We haven't had as many of the construction management risk projects as we did in 2014, and that's by design. We shifted to CSP or competitive proposal. So, and that was just to take advantage of the market in this 2018 bond. But we've had a few projects that we, that we did, that we have audited, in particular, Gunn was CMAR that we audited in the very beginning. We're in the middle of the biggest audit, which is in and around the Arlington High School project, and that one will wrap up over the next month or so and be submitted to the internal auditing team for presentation to the board. So we, and then we have a number that are coming up, we, because we migrated back into CMAR because of the, some of the complexities around projects like the stadiums, and then, and in particular, some of these bigger projects like Arlington High that were more complex. So we'll have a few more coming along. This year was a kind of a, I don't want to say an off-year for audits, but we just didn't have projects other than Arlington High School. So we didn't get a chance to do much more than just the education piece for the, for the committee.
Okay. And, and Mr. Horn, since you're there, and a question I was going to come to that I, I think you might have more of an answer or specified answer for, is that, Dr. Parra, you mentioned that you're ready to, if there are available bond funds left over, I know it's, you know, we're not projecting it into this until '27, but as we're getting closer to the end, there's just a difference in the type of projects we're doing.
That's correct.
Is, do we have a sense of, of how many, how much of the bond funds will be left over? Realistically, I know that we had some of that in the '09 and '14, and CBOCs then weighed in on it, and there was a, you know, for example, there was a, a new entrance put on to Arlington High, I think in, in '14 or something like that that resulted from this.
That's right.
So what are, what potentially would be the magnitude of, of that?
Yeah. We'll, and I'll touch a bit, a bit on that in the next presentation, but as far as that, right now, as we've realigned, Mr. Parkos and the team, the finance team, we've worked to the point where we, we feel very confident that we'll be able to complete this bond within what we initially had established for the facility side of it, which is just over $852 million, which, that means that the interest earnings that we, that we have garnered thus far, those will be the funds that we would likely have available, and so, and I'll, I'll have that pulled up a little later and be able to go into more detail on it, but that's probably in the neighborhood of $25 million at this point, after we pay all of our costs associated with the bond, and then also any arbitrage funds that we have to return to the federal government. So, so I would expect somewhere probably in that $25 million range that, that we would have available for the committee and for the board to decide how we proceed forward.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful to know.
That's right.
And, and one of those projects that I, is it, are we moving forward with the parking at Lamar that, that Ms. Peterson brought up? Or, because I feel like I've seen a drawing with that.
Yes, sir. That's correct. You want to go ahead?
No, no, no. I don't know where it landed, so.
It was, it was a great idea, and, and we do need parking, additional parking over there, and so we looked at that, and it's being included with our work for Lamar, so when we told Kara, she was quite excited about that.
Yeah, because I, the point I was trying to make is that it's not just that, you know, Ms. Peterson was able to give a presentation, and, and, you know, the adults around the room nodded their head and smiled and said that, you know, that's nice. Like, I have seen drawings of that, so I wanted to ask, because my impression was that we were actually going to do that project.
That's correct, sir.
That came from a student on this committee, which is great.
Precisely.
Yes. That's great. I did not know that, that part of it, but yes, I am, I am so proud of her, and that's great that we're going to actually be able to act on that.
So that, that, I think some of, based on what you said, Mr. Horn, I'm going to, I'm going to reserve a few questions, I think, to, to your presentation coming up, but you mentioned that one of the discussions was lighting items, and I know that, that, that the intersection of athletics and lighting has been sort of a pressure point for us in the past, and due to new LED lighting, we're able to, the city is more amenable to working with us to get lights on, on fields. Was there, has, did y'all discuss in committee maybe accelerating progress or maybe scheduling directional lighting at junior high fields that maybe wasn't something we anticipated we could do in 19 bond fund, with 19 bond funds?
We did not discuss that. No.
Okay.
I, I've always been under the impression that some of the junior high fields, like you said, were not allowed to have lights because of the, the community and the neighborhoods around them. So this is news to me, yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll come back to Mr. Horn in the next presentation on that. The last point I wanted to make was, you mentioned the nitty-gritty that, that people sometimes overlook in things like HVAC systems and lighting, and that's, I think, always so important to highlight, especially HVAC systems are so, not just important that people take for granted, because we're in Texas, we're used to air conditioning everywhere, but they're so expensive. I mean, looking at numbers, I remember one of the first things I noticed when I was, you know, way back when on, on the first bond, is like, why does this one elementary school seem like they've got, you know, $6 million, and some of these other elementary schools at the time didn't, didn't have as much? And the answer was, is we had to put in new AC units on the whole campus because the other ones ran out. And it's just the magnitude of, of that particular expense and how important it is to our operations, I think, is easy to overlook, but it's a big-ticket line item that we have to be willing to, to encounter because we need it to, to run our schools.
Yes.
And I, that's the last point I wanted to make. Ms. Richardson, did you have anything? Your light was on for a second. Okay.
It was on for a second.
Ms. Richardson.
So one of the things that we recently were able to do was we were invited to tour Rodriguez Junior High. And one of the conversations that I was able to be a part of with Superintendent, Mr., Dr. Smith, and with Kelly Horn was looking at this beautiful football field at Joey Rodriguez Junior High, and they have this great lighting, and it's going to be amazing. Wouldn't it have been nice to have it at other fields? Why, why did that not happen? And since I have not been on the board as long as other people are tenured, I didn't know the full history behind it. And Mr. Horn was able to explain, back when those fields were originally done, that the lighting and the permit, it was not up to be approved at that time. The lighting would have been a hindrance to homes around the area. It wouldn't have been the quality that they have now. But thanks to Rodriguez Junior High, they are expecting to be able to show what quality they do, the way that it doesn't cause light pollution, it's not going to hurt homeowners' values, and that once people see this, we are going to be able to go back and hopefully put it lights up at all these other junior high facilities so they can be used more often. And now that we're going to have that awesome example, because again, technology moves so quickly nowadays, and the technology that they wished had been there for these other fields, it's now here. So I loved hearing that, that could be an option down the road, so our facilities could be used no matter what time of day or night it is.
Yeah.
And that'd be great, because I also think that's an efficiency that, that we could realize in the transportation area, because right now, we're having to transport kids in, in many situations for outdoor sports from two junior highs to a, a third location that does have lighting, and we'd be able to save at least one of those trips for, for folks in the future if we're able to do that.
It does also impact their, their day-to-day schedules of practicing, because, I mean, they can't practice at 6:00 in the morning when there's no light, right? They can't be on the football field, so then they're moved into a gymnasium, which doesn't provide the same experience if you're playing soccer on a basketball court, right? That's, that's not the ideal experience. So for them to be able to actually play on the, on the soccer field would be fantastic.
Okay. Well, thank you for your presentation, Dr. Parra. Thank you, committee members, for your service. I see Ms. Peznell back there, who's, who's been through, through many of these, including with me on a period. So thank you all for being here. And I also want to thank my colleagues up here on the Community Engagement Committee this year. That committee was, was chaired by Ms. Haynes and also included Mr. Mike and, and Ms. Richardson. And you'll get to, you'll get to keep hanging out with a few of them. Ms. Haynes and Ms. Richardson will be back next year. Ms. Richardson is chair, and they'll be joined by Mr. Wilbanks, and that'll be effective July 1.
Awesome.
All right. So thank you all for your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
And we'll move on now to our next report. Very closely related, our, our next item, Report B, is a 2019 bond update report. And I just will go ahead and turn that back over to Mr. Horn.
Thank you, President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith, and I told them they could, they didn't have to stay, so. Some of them may stick it out a little bit longer, though. But I think I could speak for Mr. Parkos and, and say that if we needed somebody to do this presentation on bond update, Catherine could do it, don't you think? So she did a great job. Great job, Catherine. Thank you. Okay. Well, I, I did abbreviate this update a bit so that we could focus again on, on update relative to the stadium. So if you wondered why it was a little shorter, this is, I abbreviated it like I did the last time. So we'll jump right into this, this evening, and, and again, the reference slide that I always have has been, I took that out, but I wanted to keep, continue to provide the financial summary for you, and you'll notice on the financial summary that there are no remaining funds to be issued. All the funds have been issued at this point, and in fact, the funds are beginning to be spent down rather quickly, and that's by design. Obviously, we have some very large projects, and still a couple of large projects on tap. So while there's, in the facility side, there's still a bit over $200 million. There are probably four projects that will absorb the most of that, right? And we'll talk a little bit about the stadiums in a bit, along with some other projects of significance like the CTC and the expansion there and others. So, so that number will shrink quickly and move over into the encumbered column, and then, and then at that point, it'll just be a matter of, of the spend rate that we have project to project. So when you get down into, and I'm, I'm going a little bit off track here, but when you get in projects like Rodriguez or Glaspy that are finishing up now, spend rate on those projects can be $3 million to $4 million a month on those, so you can kind of, you kind of get an idea of how fast those dollars get spent on big projects. And so with that said, though, we talked a little bit briefly in the last report from Ms. Parra, some of the questioning about what we thought might be in funds that we would have available towards the end of the project. And so rather than spend a lot more time at the top of that chart, I'll take us to what we call the below-the-line numbers. And, and I, we've estimated the arbitrage liability. That number could, could go up, but it's likely to go down a little bit more than anything. But it'll still be very close to that number. Our bond issuance costs at this point are, are, they've, they've ended. We, we won't have any further because we've issued all of our bonds, so there are no costs associated with that. Maybe some miscellaneous costs along the way, but that number will stay pretty well static as well. But our interest in additional proceeds number at the bottom will continue to go up, probably not quite at the rate that we were initially, but it'll continue to climb. So when you do the math, President Chapa, that's where I came up with that roughly, that $25 million, and I think that's pretty conservative. It'd probably be a little bit north of that, but, but you can see where I come up with my estimate there. And so at the, these numbers, though, by the way, as well, are at the, by the 1st of May. So there's been significant spending, you know, in the way of funds that have been spent down, and so, and, and while we're wrapping up some of those larger projects, we have, again, we have some very large projects coming on board pretty quickly, and so they'll start out a little slower, just like all the others, but then they'll pick back up as well. This just gives you an idea of, of where we are today in projects that we have in planning and in design and bid. The completed projects, while that number would seem rather small, if you remember, we, we couple a lot of projects together. Just looking at the playgrounds, for example, all those were individual projects, but we classify those as one project instead of 53. And so, so we could, it could be a little inflated, but at the same time, again, we, we marry projects or package projects oftentimes to, to, to be able to manage those better with our project managers, and also make them more attractive to our bidders so that we get better pricing. But at this point in time, our folks are working very hard on Phase IV and Phase V projects, and many of those projects are underway at this point, and, and a lot of that's being done and being managed and general contracted, if you will, by our own team, and that's helping us to save money and put that, put those dollars back into the campuses and, and improvements and that sort of thing. And, and why we do that, Mr., President Chapa, you mentioned it earlier, you know, there are some projects that don't require a lot of trades, and so if we have a project, take, and you've all been in the PDC lately, and you've seen the improvements to the concrete and the pavement out front, the landscaping, the interior work that we've done as well, and we're in the process now of getting ready to, to replace all the carpeting throughout the building. A lot of those projects can be managed by our team, and we don't need to hire an architect, and we don't need to hire an engineer. We have those services in-house, and we also have the ability to contract it ourselves, essentially, bid that work and manage that work since it's a single trades or fewer trades. So it helps us to So it helps us to save substantial dollars. Just a couple of quick photos. You've mentioned, Ms. Richardson, that we went and saw Rodriguez recently, and I wish I had, I wished I could keep up with the progress at Rodriguez. This photo is not that long, it's taken about three weeks ago, but you all know how fast it goes this time of year when we get close to the end. We're literally two weeks away at this point, probably, from being able to put furniture in the building. And then a week or so later, we'll move the principal in and her staff. So it's moving very quickly, and we're very excited about that. You can see the work in the back, the background, and we talked a little bit about the lighting just a moment ago. And so you're correct, Ms. Richardson, this project is is one that we're using, along with the Workman project, to prove out our lighting. And we have lighting, the LED lighting going in, going in in many other places. It will be in the new stadium at Glaspie. It'll be in the new stadiums when we get ready to do the work for Wildman and Cravens as well. And then it's going in at the softball field. So in all of those, a lot of those softball field locations and in the, in this particular case, here at the new Rodriguez Junior High School, we'll be able to prove out, just as you said, Ms. Richardson, that how how that LED lighting essentially is just a light curtain, and it just, you can almost see the dark to light, you know, straight down from the light system. So so that light pollution won't impede into the neighborhood like it might otherwise before. So it does give us an opportunity to prove our our lighting case to the city, and they've been very supportive. They like the new packages, and and they've said that they support lighting going forward, going forward for us. And then we have our Glaspie Field Construction. Again, this is three weeks ago. It's been significant improvements been made since this time. The track is in place and things, the field turf and that sort of thing are going in. Structural steel for bleachers and that sort of thing, the the skin, the external facade of the press boxes is going up. So there's been a lot of improvements made there, and so we're, while the weather's given us fits lately, I'll be honest, it's, we're still working very hard to keep that project timeline as close as we can to the original date. And then we talked a bit about hub just a moment ago. We were, we were sitting around 26% for a little while there, but when we shift, as you mentioned, President Chapa, when we shift to different trades and we spend significant dollars in trades where there they might not, may not be a lot of hub participation, our number will dip a little bit. But but we're, we're just continuing to try to work to keep that in the mid 20s and higher if we can, but at the same time, not costing the district to do that work as well. So sometimes the the struggle we have with hub contractors, hub subcontractors, is is not that they can't perform quality work, it's sometimes our projects are just too large for them to be able to bid that work. So it can be a bit challenging, but but there's some astounding numbers. If if we looked at individual projects, we have projects where the the contractors are are using 40 and 50% hub participation. So we get, we get excited about that. Sometimes those are the smaller jobs, but but again, that's pretty significant. Okay, and so I'm going to shift now over to our stadium, an update on the stadium. So about, let's see, it was probably two board meetings back, I brought information about the stadiums, in particular, Wildman and Cravens. And you you asked that I that I consider, or we rework the design a bit and have it be a little bit more like what we see, the concourse style that we have at at Glaspie. So we we've done that, and I'm going to show you a series of slides tonight so that you kind of have an idea of where we were and what we're comparing it to and how we are, how we look today, so that hopefully we've been able to achieve what you, what you were asking for us to do. So I start with the the current design at Glaspie, so that you can see how the, all of the amenities kind of wrap around the track and the field. And so and so we'll start with this reference point, and we'll make reference to Glaspie again in a couple of slides as well. But I'll move now from that to the existing conditions at Cravens. And essentially, what we have is, we have kind of an entrance point in the north, some buildings that kind of run east and west, and then we have one large facility on what is the southwest corner. And then very traditional bleachers that just kind of run straight down the sidelines with a press box on one side and a small scouting press box on the on the visitor's side. And so when, what we did, just to kind of give you an idea of how, what I was bringing to you last time, in the way of information, is we overlaid the Glaspie, the new Glaspie Field amenities onto that site where Cravens is today. And so you can see how if we were to just keep the same amenities and the same shapes and so forth exactly, it would put us out into North Davis, it would put us too far into that northeast corner and out into North Davis and into the parking lot. And so and then we would also impede significantly down onto the the end of the field near base, near the baseball complex. So but we we could, we could take these same elements and kind of change them up a bit, and so that's what I'm going to bring to you. So this was, I'm kind of going backwards again. This was the design we had, the, we brought you last time. And so it it placed the most of the amenities on the corners and one large, you know, dressing area on the south, the southwest corner. And so I'll just bring that back up as a reference point, and now I'm going to shift to the new design. So the new design brings that feel of what you saw at Glaspie, what you liked about the Glaspie design. It creates that kind of wraparound concourse feel around the field. It it spreads out those amenities a bit. The, you'll see, the last slide I bring to you tonight will be a comparison of each of the stadiums in the way of numbers, so I won't get into that too much now, but you're going to see that this, the bleachers here mimic exactly like what we have at Glaspie or what we're building at Glaspie, both on the the home side and the visitor's side. So and we were able to avoid getting into the parking areas out on the North Davis or into the baseball complex by changing this up. So I I hope that this this look tonight accomplishes what you were hoping that you'd see in in the way of both a similar look to what we have at Glaspie. You're going to see some renderings I'll show you in a bit, too, that will give you an idea of of how, while they're similar, it's still going to have its own feel, right? It'll still feel like a different stadium besides what you're going to see at Glaspie. So I'm going to, before I go there, though, I'm going to, I'm going to do the same little exercise we did here now with Wildman. So our current Wildman Field condition, very similar. We have a ticket booth on the north side, and most of the, most amenities are on the corners, right? And then we have the dressing facility on the south end of the field. Again, if we overlay the Glaspie, the current Glaspie design, on top of that, much of the amenities are out in the parking lot, if you if you follow where where I'm at. So while it doesn't affect us much on the west side of the field, it impacts us greatly on the east side. So our, the design we brought to you the last time kept that same similar feel, right? It kept the buildings on the corners, and I get it, it kind of keeps them at a distance, right? It just doesn't have that intimate feel. So we asked the architect to, again, bring the elements of that concourse, that kind of wraparound feel, to Wildman. And you can see, again, bleachers, the bleacher systems, the press box, all exactly like what we have at Glaspie. The buildings kind of wrap around the facility to to make it more intimate, and they're spread out while they're still in the corners. You you get, you get a slightly different design from each of the other two, but again, similar in its approach. And what we tried to do with all of these is really work towards where's that entry point, right? So the entry point for each of these shifts a little bit and gives it its own unique So if we kind of shift to some renderings of what we think it might look like, this would be if you were standing on the northeast corner of Wild, the new Wildman Field, looking out towards the venue itself, and and there, it would be split so that you would have home side ticketing on one side or entrance on one side and visitor on the other side. And then the look we, and these are images that we did, very similar to what we did at at Glaspie for you, when we talked about the the schematics at that time. We gave you kind of the entry point, and then we gave you this night, this night, look at what it might look like at night, and you can, how you could see the massing and how it might feel. So again, with, hopefully, that's a good rendition of, or rendering of our LED lighting right there, too. So and then Cravens Field, again, similar, a similar feel, but but with Cravens slightly different in that, you know, it, the entry point would face more due north versus northeast like the other one did, and that's just a function of where the parking is and and how it works. Some of it has to do also with some easements that we're working, we have to work around, but you can get a good feel of how this would have its own unique character as well. And then, again, a look at night. So the massing is a little bit more concentrated on the north end of Cravens than it is, say, with Wildman or Glaspie. But we do, you can kind of see in the in the far, what I would call the the top of the picture, you can see a a fieldhouse on that corner. We we still preserve that baseball, that parking lot that's by baseball, we still preserve that, will improve that, by the way. That'll, that can still be used by baseball during baseball season, which is pretty significant for them because their parking's so remote otherwise. But it also allows us to use that for buses, for student, you know, bringing in the students, the athletes, and also for secure parking for VIP members and also for our officials. It's always very important. So that 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 really kind of works well for us to have that parking there. And then one of the really cool things about about that fieldhouse and where it sits, if you kind of notice, it's a little darker in the background, but you'll notice the baseball field, and you'll notice the new softball field behind it. In that building, there will be the concession and restroom for the softball will be in the backside of that building, and it'll be multipurpose. So we'll use that, kind of to your point earlier about about Bailey. It just made sense to utilize restroom and concession for both football and softball. It it creates, you know, some efficiencies for us and saves us some money, you know, so. And it'll be a substantial, substantial facility for both softball and for football season and track. And then I promised I would bring to you a comparison. So we pulled together just a comparison of of one field to the next, and you can see down through the list that essentially every, every single number is identical. The press box square footage is the same, and the reason why is it's the same press box. We just recited it. Home locker rooms, they're all the same size. You'll notice in the visitor locker room, Glaspie's slightly smaller. And the only reason why it's slightly smaller is because it's it's more of a rectangle shape where the others, the other two have a little bit of a curved shape to them. So it's a little more efficient. So you won't realize, if you're in one versus the other, you won't realize that it's smaller because that that represents over the, over 2,600 square feet, that might be four inches along the walls, is all it is. So it's just, it's just a function of the design. But aside from that, our vending and sessions numbers are the same, our storage numbers are the same. And so and then when you get down into the fixture count, you can see that we've got the same number of fixtures in each of the facilities as well. So aside from that one small, that one small issue of of square footage in the visitor locker room at Glaspie, you'll see that they're all the same. And with that, I'll open it up to questions or discussion, and I'd be happy to go back to any other slides if you want to look at them again.
All right, thank you, Mr. Horn. Trustees with comments or questions tonight? I have Ms. Haynes up first. Ms. Haynes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
You didn't really speak about this, so if it's coming in a different presentation, that's fine. But clarification, again, on the softball fields, I know I asked last time, is the intent that every softball field has its own restroom area that's accessible for guests and players and a concession area, and that every softball team will have the ability to store their equipment in their own area?
Yeah, that's, we are working towards that. They, there are some facilities, for example, if you go to Segin, we already have restrooms and concessions. So so we wouldn't be creating them at each venue. We would where we need that, though. So if we need concessions and restrooms and storage at a, at a particular facility, then we would add that. If we can take advantage of what we have or add to it, that's also the purpose. And we've worked closely with Dr. Hill and the athletic staff to make sure that we're addressing and making sure everybody has equal access and equal facilities.
So then, so then the intent is that, like at Martin, where they are quite far away from everything?
Yes, ma'am.
That they will have concessions and bathrooms?
Yes, right. That's correct. And in some cases, we are going back now, and it's more a product of of some of the permitting and and back to the question of of lighting. Some some projects, even at Arlington High, we're going back now and adding in a concession restroom there, because at the time, we were pushing that project so hard in order to get the softball field in, we 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 had to wait on the the building. But now that's going in as well. And then the same thing with Sam Houston. So there's some, some permitting nuances, design, you know, submission nuances with the city that we're having to work through.
Okay.
But but we're still, they're not forgotten. They're just being picked up as separate projects.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. I have Ms. Fowler.
President Chapa, thank you, Mr. Horn, for this very good report. It's very detailed, and I appreciate it. I live in the Martin neighborhood there, and I can't tell you when you all first started building how many calls and emails I got with the neighbors worried about the lights. But I really appreciated at the very beginning how you and and your team met with those neighborhood people and explained to them and showed them, and you completely calmed the waters. And I still appreciate, that was several years ago, but I still appreciate your efforts on that because they were getting in an uproar, and for sale signs were going to go up and just all that. But you really did a great job of bringing the community in and talking with them and listening to them and explaining to them.
Thank you.
So I'm still appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Other trustees with comments or questions tonight? I just have a few, Mr. Horn. I'll start with the lighting suggestion that I had last time, and I, you and I have talked about this before. If there are leftover bond funds that that can be used, I, I, my view is, one of the places that that could go is into lighting on the junior high fields or wherever we have that now, because I think, as I, when I asked you a question at the tour of Rodriguez, it sounds like the lighting installation is a relatively low cost compared to many, many other things, a relatively low-cost item that can be done pretty quickly and efficiently. And I think that the the bang for our buck there in terms of saving our staff and students and transportation folks' time, money, resources, I think that would be well-taken for us to go ahead and do, once we're in a position to do it.
Yes, sir.
Because it just, you know, just to use an example of, you know, Bailey and Gunn having to go to Arlington High, the JV field for games, when, you know, there, one could just go to the other would be a huge benefit to those campuses and many of the other campuses that are, that have facilities that don't currently have lighting. Onto the stadiums.
Okay.
This looks great. I know I threw you a curveball several meetings ago when when this came back up the first time. I thank you to you and your staff and the architects for working on such an accelerated timeline to rethink these projects in a way that I think is is what I was expecting when it came back the the first time. And so I I don't have anything further to say. Thank you for meeting me on on my concerns there, and I think that this is a very, these are going to be great facilities, I look forward to them going in. And I don't want you to think that you or your staff think that I don't appreciate the resource constraints in terms of, like, space, especially that you were dealing with, especially at Cravens, having North Davis there, having the parking lot is, that that's, that site is very, very difficult, and I understand that. And so I think that you guys have been very creative in trying to open up that space as much as you can, given the constraints that you have, to make it feel much more like the newness of what I I think is going to, Glaspie's going to bring. And so I, I, you know, I can't, I can't speak for certain communities, but I I can, I do have a lot of of experience at Sam Houston.
Yeah.
And I know that the folks over there are going to be very excited about this and and feel like this is a big step forward in that facility.
I think, I think the product will be better after looking at it and and working through it. And I have to give credit to Mr. Parkos behind me on my left shoulder. He he really pushed, I pushed him hard, and he worked really hard with the team to get this done quickly. So just want to thank Mike for all his efforts.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parkos. I really do appreciate it. I do have a light now back up for Ms. Richardson.
Because of what you just said, saying that last minute you had asked about some of the comparisons of the fields, I appreciate on Slide 20, if we can go back to that, that right there, I think, is going to be able to be a great slide that we can show out and show communities, show schools. So all, so often, we think the gla, the grass and the glass, the grass is greener on the other side, and when we're able to show something like this, literally down to how many toilets, sinks, drinking fountains, space, square footage, this is a great example that we can say, you may feel that way, but what do the facts show?
Right.
What does the actual data show? And the data here shows that you guys have been thoughtful and conscientious throughout this entire process. Thank you for giving us this, and I do hope if we have changes, because I know, as we've watched you go throughout construction, things do change. If at some point these numbers change, let us know. We don't have to be married to them, but we want to make sure we are always giving accurate representation. accurate representations of what's going on.
Absolutely.
So thank you for giving us, and thank you for giving us this data to be able to share into our communities.
Certainly. My pleasure.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. That, that's a really important point. This, this table, I think, will go a long way with a lot of constituencies, as well as the, the schematic designs you've shown here, where you had what we had before, here's what Glaspy is, and here's how best we've tried to fit that onto the restraint, given the restraints that we have. So this makes it very easy to, to go into the community and, and say, we said we were going to have three, as equal as we could get them, premier facilities for our students and, and here they are.
Yes, sir.
So.
Agreed.
If there are no further comments or questions, thank you, Mr. Horn. Thank you to you and your staff. We'll move on now to report item C. Tonight, we have a district priority update on our priority for curriculum management in a curriculum management audit. Dr. Smith?
I'd like to invite Dr. Wertz to the podium tonight. As our trustees recall, this was part of our key progress measure under academic growth, was to ensure that we began a curriculum management audit and had actionable items to address by the end of the school year, so Dr. Wertz is going to walk us through that.
All right. Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith. Thank you for letting me be here this evening. I'm here to give a report out on the first phase of the curriculum audit. We're in a two-phase kind of process, and we wanted to share with you some of the initial findings that are coming out of the first part. My purpose tonight is to go over specifically not only what some of those initial findings were, but also what some of those action steps may be. And as Dr. Smith mentioned in the beginning of his comments, this is directly related to one of the key progress measures in the board priorities connected to academic growth. So what is a curriculum management audit? Well, and a curriculum management audit is conducted in a school district, it really is there to do two things. One is to evaluate the extent to which the school district has established a coordinated and valid, valid curriculum system that's across the district. And it's also looking to identify what are the strengths and the areas for opportunities with respect to the way policies are designed and implemented across the district and how those policies inform organizational alignment and practices that are taking place in the classroom across the district. There are three main areas that they look for when they think about a curriculum management process, and the first place that they start is policy. What policy is the board adopting, and what kinds of ways does that policy inform administrative regulations that then direct practice in the district? Then, the next step is they look for alignment, to see that there's alignment between the policy that's adopted, the structures and roles that are put in, across the system in terms of personnel, and then how data is used, used to drive increases in student academic outcomes. And then finally, they look to see how is curriculum managed? This also includes the design of the curriculum, the way it's developed, how it's being implemented in the classrooms, and then also the way that it's evaluated. Is there alignment between what is written, taught, and tested in term, in the curriculum documents, and then also the way that it's being implemented in the classroom? In a curriculum management audit, there are five areas. They are the district vision and accountability, curriculum, the consistency and equity of the curriculum, feedback and productivity. And in our first phase of the audit, we're only actually going to focus on two of these. So when you think about curriculum, district vision and accountability, what they're basically looking to see is, has the district established a clear vision and demonstrated controls in the way that we implement with resources, our programs, and the personnel that we have across the district? In curriculum, they're really looking for, are there clear and valid objectives that we want students and clientele, is what they call it in the system, actually learning? And then they're also digging into consistency and equity. In other words, is there internal consistency and equity in the way programs are developed and implemented across the system, across any school? And then, in feedback, the focus is around assessment. Is there a system in which we can receive routine feedback through reassessments to help us make adjustments or adaptations to curriculum and/or instructional practice in the classroom to meet the needs of students? And then finally, are we, are we consistently trying to increase our productivity and efficiency, specifically as it relates to resources? There were two phases to our curriculum audit. The first phase took place between January and June, and the first phase really focused on a few things. One is we conducted what we call a curriculum management audit training. There are two components to that, so all of our staff that are touching this in many ways participate in that. The reason why this is really important is because when you get the actual audit findings back, you want to understand how to interpret those and then act on them, and so that training really just helped people understand the whole concept of not only the audit, but the component, all the five components that they're looking at, and how do you operationalize the findings once you get them? We also, they also conduct a document review, so we submitted pretty much, I mean, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of documents that allow them to dig in, just like you would think about when you think about a typical audit. What does the curriculum look like? What are your planning documents look like? How are you assessing? Pretty much anything that's related to any of those areas, we flooded them with the documents pertaining to it. And that review covered pretty much all five of those areas as much as we could. Then what we did is we collected work samples, so there was at least one work sample from every core area, from every teacher in the bill, in the district who taught across the district, even if you were a gifted student or, a gifted teacher or a student, specialized students. So thousands of work samples, boxes were shipped to the auditors for them to look through the work samples to see how the curriculum is translating into practice with kids. And then finally, what they did is they are sharing with us, and we actually will think we'll get the net, the final copy in a couple of days, their initial draft recommendations for areas one and two, which are specifically the district vision and accountability and the curriculum. The second phase will take place starting in September, it'll happen between the September 8th and 11th. And what they'll do during that week is they'll be conducting interviews across the district, they'll interview every district-level person, every principal. They'll be conducting surveys, and they will do stakeholder-focused groups, and then they will be visiting classrooms. So they will visit every classroom, every, every campus in the district and classrooms in those campuses. And what they're looking for is impact. So you have your written curriculum, the things that you're trying to accomplish, and then they're going to see, well, is it actually happening in the classroom, and is there a gap there that can be addressed? Once that is done, then they will take all of their findings and provide a final audit report to us, which may include adjustments to the stuff they're giving, the things that they're providing to us in June this month, because this month, all they're providing is findings based on what they've witnessed in documents. They're not, they haven't made any sense of it in terms of the way it translates into practice in the classroom. So would, they did say you should anticipate that there are even adjustments to the findings that they're providing us in June, once they go to the classrooms. So that will happen in the first semester of next school year, and by the end of the first semester, we'll have that final report. So what is the, what are the two areas that we're going to talk about tonight? The first one's district vision and accountability. And when you think about district and vision and accountability, the big way I can articulate is think of it as planning and policy. That's pretty much what it is. They reviewed over 524 policies, administrative regulations, to try to evaluate and understand where we were. They're looking for a few things. They're looking to make sure that that policy defines very clearly the vision for instructional delivery and engagement, and they're looking to see that there is a framework in policy that defines very clearly by the Board of Trustees what are, what the curriculum should contain, that it includes state requirements and federal and local program goals, that there is a direction about how to use data to improve our operations. They're looking for the way that policy defines and directs change and innovation, and that it's really focusing resources on priority goals that are directly connected to the objectives and the mission that the district's established. They're also looking to see that there is structure and coordinated effort across facilities. And one area that's important about district and accountability is they're not only looking at board policy, but they're looking at organizational structure, span of control. When you think about the, the way, the who, what personnel we have, and how we structure our personnel in order to reach our targets and goals, what's the line of authority look like across the district? How does that impact planning and system improvement? Those are all things that fall within what they call Focus Area 1, which is district vision and accountability. Another simple way that I can phrase it is, they're looking to see that board policy articulates clearly what is loose and what is tight. And when we say loose and tight, what we mean is, tight is the what we want kids to know and learn to do. The loose part is the how. It's all the, it's the instructional pedagogy and the way teachers go about their learning. So what, what, what came back as some high-level strengths in the initial document review? Well, the first thing that, that we, that we heard from them very clearly is, they almost had no findings in the planning area because the planning, the strategic planning and alignment in our district, they said is very strong. There's, they can see that there were extensive planning processes that we have had over the multiple years, multi-year strategic plans, and that our district improvement planning process has actionable strategies that are aligned specifically to the strategic plans that we have in the district, and that we have very specific implementation action plans that are attached to roles in the district to operationalize those things. So that was one area that came back as a strength. They also said that our organizational structure, span of control is strong. So they're looking for every, for, for leaders to have no more than seven to 12 direct reports, and that's what they call span of control in order to be, in order, able to facilitate effective supervision, and we fall within that, that range. And then the last thing is that we have a consistent template that we use for really defining what jobs, job descriptions should look like. So there is consistent design and development of job descriptions, and we have specific processes that we use for hiring and establishing role clarity, and those were areas of strength. Opportunities that came out of Focus Area 1 were, there are, there are five, there are four here that I listed, two of them are related to each other, so I'm going to talk about those two related, and then I'll jump to the other two. The first one is around the board developing and establishing and adopting a comprehensive curriculum policy. So if you were to go into our board policy, you're going to see that we have EH Local. What they will say and they're recommending is that we revise and enhance our policy so that it's much more explicit about the board's expectations around the curriculum development, the way that it's reviewed, the way that we deliver it, the specific outcomes we're looking for with kids. They're looking to see that the board policy articulates clearly what the oversight, long-range and short-range planning should look like. If we have subcommittees, kind of like some that we've actually talked about tonight, that there is articulated in board policy specifically what their form needs to look like and their function, and also how those bodies help support not only the decisions that are made around curriculum design and development, but that the performance that we have in the district, the appraise, the way we appraise performance in the district is directly linked to the instructional quality that we have. The other two areas that they, that they articulated were around organizational charts and job descriptions. And remember, we're talking about paper right now, we haven't got into practice. So when it comes down to organizational charts, that, some of the feedback we received is that the organizational chart really needs to include all what they call mission-critical positions. So in essence, you should be able to see a direct line from the board to the superintendent to senior staff, all the way through to the teacher. That they, they say our current organizational chart doesn't include all the mission-critical roles, and you should see that through line. They also say that it should reflect a, a chain of command with really defined responsibilities across job functions. In some jobs, they, on paper, it seems vague, it's not specific enough. The other thing that they, they articulated specifically around job descriptions was, it's important that every job description in the district have some link to instructional delivery and/or student achievement, regardless of what you do. And so what they're recommending is that we clarify our job descriptions in a way that more explicitly connect job descriptions to curriculum implementation, clear qualifications that really link people to the way they support their role, supports instructional delivery and student outcomes. The second area that they gave us feedback on was around the curriculum. And the curriculum is Focus Area 2, really is thinking about the scope, the quality and alignment of the educational program across the school system. So what we're looking for in, in Focus Area 2 is that there is clearly established learner expectations and definitions of instructional content for effective teaching and learning in the district. So here are some common indicators that they look for in districts. They look to make sure that there is a system-wide set of goals and objectives that address all programs and courses. They look to see that we are contextually responsive, so we think about our national standards, our, our statewide standards, and even local initiatives when we design curriculum. They look to see that there are short and long-range curriculum management planning. And then they also dive into things or, that are really trying to understand, are we addressing current needs and potential future needs in the way that we manage curriculum? And then finally, a couple other things are, they're looking for cohesion across the system, that there is explicit direction to professional staff and even the superintendent around the implementation of curriculum, and that it's clearly explained, so teachers can understand how to implement it, and that we are trying to adjust it along the way to make sure it's reaching the needs of, of individual student populations. So here are a couple of things that came out in terms of looking at the documents. So the first thing is, we met scope. So in terms of scope for curriculum, we have curriculum guidance across most of our content areas in a way that meets their standard. We, curriculum documents are prioritized in Arlington, and the elementary curriculum specifically meets their expectations for structure and high quality. So they actually had a lot of really positive feedback about the elementary curriculum itself. They also gave, said that there was, some of the strengths were specifically related to the guidance that we're providing in our curriculum documents in core content and non-core content, and that there was coverage across our, our courses. So curriculum guidance is available for across grade levels, even if for courses, whether they're core content courses or they're non-core content. Some opportunities is, there are, there were several opportunities that we have. The first one that they articulated was the development of a curriculum management plan. In Arlington, we have several components of the curriculum management plan. What they're recommending that we do is we refine those components and we bring them all together. So there's one specific plan that's directly connected and aligned to what board policy would articulate, and that that, that plan is used to, in a formalized way, that really coordinate how we revise the curriculum, what cycles do we use to really understand how kids are mastering the curriculum through assessments, communication, feedback, evaluation of the curriculum, all those things. As you can see from even the descriptor there, we do a lot of those different things. What they, what they're recommending is that you formalize it in the form of a plan so that there's transparency about all those parts and how they come together. The other area that they talked about was differentiation within the curriculum for a guidance for specific groups. So for example, one of the things they've talked about is that the curriculum documents that they, we could incorporate more scaffolding, more accommodations and modifications specifically for students who are in special needs populations or in advanced courses. So as courses become more complex, more differentiation in the curriculum documents to support that complexity for students. And you're going to hear more of that specifically in the secondary curriculum area. They provided some feedback specifically around junior high and high school curriculum that for, for us to design curriculum that has more clarity, increased depth, and additional guidance for teachers in those grade-level bands. They called out the professional learning plan, which we've already started working on, and you've adopted the first phase of that, and how the professional learning plan specifically reinforces implementation of curriculum, specific supports around instructional strategies we want to see in the classroom, and how those things address the individual student needs. And then finally, it, it came back to the same thing we talked about in Focus Area 1 around policy and instructional alignment, making sure that board policy clearly defines the pacing, scaffolding, and student-centered instructional flexibility that's expected, and that those things be then integrated into our documents. So the big idea is, set the policy, create the structures, and then support the implementation. So what are our next steps? We will, we will, we should receive in the next coming days their first draft of the, of the areas for one and two. We've seen the initial one, they're, they're refining it right now. We will operationalize the training that all of the team received, which was a curriculum management audit training, levels one and two, we'll, we'll start to operationalize that. And then we'll develop sequence action plans that try to address the things we know we can get started on, even before the fall gets here. And then what we're actually doing right now is preparing for those onsite visits that will come in the fall. There's a lot of coordination that has to happen, so that we can make sure that it's a meaningful experience and that we get the most authentic feedback back at the end in December, so that we can act on those things. So that's the report, and we'll open for some discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz.
You're welcome.
Are there any trustees with comments or questions? Mr. Wilbanks?
Thank you, President Chapa, and thank you, Dr. Wertz. This was great, a long time coming, excited about the work. It sounds massive.
Yeah.
So, kudos to your team for subjecting yourself to this and, but also meeting the challenge, so I think this is going to be great for the district. And I also agree with one of their key findings, that it starts with policy. And I went and looked, and there is a dearth of policy addressing curriculum specifically. So I think we've got our work cut out as a board to kind of rectify that shortcoming. Question, are there any exemplars, especially here in Texas, since we have our own unique challenges when it comes to curriculum and mandates from the state, that we could look to, to kind of... to, to kind of shoot as a goal for our district in terms of policy around curriculum?
So there's two ways I would answer that. One is yes, I think that they work with districts across the state who've actually been through this process. And I know that we could glean some exemplars we could, we could look at. Of course, they would have to be adapted to what this board is actually articulating for our system. The other thing that we can do is in the document, there's a lot more granularity about what the policy should include so that we could go back and then look, say, if this is the draft policy that's being proposed, does it meet these criteria so that if you were to go through an audit again, it would actually be a strength? It wouldn't be an area of growth. So we can attack it in those two ways, but yeah, for sure.
Yeah, definitely. And my second comment is around the curriculum alignment. Looks like, you know, we've got a lot of great scope and the curriculum at the elementary that you pointed out. I think you guys have exhibited that you guys were doing a great job in that. But the specificity in terms of all the personnel in this district that need to support the learning in each of the classroom is kind of where that growth area is for us, correct?
Yeah, I think what you're going to find, what I'm anticipating is that there's going to be feedback when they come in September and they're in classrooms. Because right now, what they're looking at is a document for the document itself and they're looking at work samples. And they're, they have criteria that they look at when they look at the curriculum documents specifically. They look at the objectives, they look at the assessments, they look at the prerequisites, the resources, the teaching strategies, the student activities, all that stuff, they look for that, those, those indicators, they score them. And you can act, in our elementary documents, they look for, you get a score total of 18 points and we're almost at 15. So we've met their threshold, so we're pretty strong. I think the point you're making is the point I anticipate when we come back in the fall, which is, does this all translate into meaningful practice in the classroom and the experience that the learner's having? Is it what we articulated as, as a district? And one of the things that they did say is that they recommend that we revamp our learning model. So back before we had COVID, you know, we were working hard on active learning cycle and the badging and all of those things where there was a learning model. That has suffered a lot since COVID and they're, they, they made a recommendation in there that it's time to revamp what that learning model is. So what we'll do is when we establish that learning model collectively again, they're going to look to see, or we will look to see, does the practice and do the documents and the support that teachers receive translate into that experience that kids are having? I think that feedback's what we're actually going to hear about in the fall, which is implementation in the nutshell.
And with the curriculum, did they look specifically at alignment to various state standards in terms of the meeting the standards for guaranteed and viable? And if it's aligned to the science of reading, for instance?
They do. They look for...
Has that work already occurred as that to be?
So there's just two parts to it. The part that has been looked at already is they, they literally pull state standards and they look at the curriculum and they see if there's alignment there. If you're working on a curriculum like college board curriculum, which actually integrates national standards, they look for alignment in those places too. What they're going to, in terms of like STR is a good example, when they come in the fall, they have specific things that they look for in the classroom for implementation. And we have an opportunity as a district to also give them feedback about things we want them to look for. So if we're instituting, for example, the science of teaching, reading, the primary grades, we can say, when you're in the classroom, we would like you to also validate whether these things are occurring from your perspective. And they will embed those into our documents to, I mean, in our findings to help us in our work. So yes, they've done that, but they've only done the parts that you can see on paper. They haven't actually gone into the room yet. That's what will happen in the fall.
Yeah, no. Great stuff. And I, as a bonus comment, one of the weaknesses with, was differentiation in the documents, curriculum documents. And you and I have talked about my son's experience in this district and the lack, you know, of scaffolding for someone that was maybe off the charts in math, not being there. The idea of differentiation was tell him to go up to the front of the class and get another worksheet to work on. And I think we, as a district, have moved a long ways away from that, I hope. And, but it sounds like there's still continued work to be done in that area.
Yeah, and that came out specifically, especially in the secondary areas. You know, there, and as it relates to very specific student populations, I'll just call special ed out as an example, we have very, we have students with a variety of learning disability, a variety of disabilities in the system. And how does the curriculum that teachers teach in the able classroom or the all-credit classroom, how did those, how did that curriculum doc, how do those curriculum documents support differentiation for those student groups in their environment? Those are some things that came out in the findings, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. Ms. McMurrow.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Just a couple of quick questions. I know that one of the highlights, one of the good findings was the alignment part. And you talked about the strategic plan. But since we're in the midst of creating a new strategic plan, if you're at liberty to share, I was going to ask you, what are the implications now on you and your team's work when we're looking at a new strategic plan?
So you're, are you referring to focus area one?
Yes. Well, I know that on that slide, you were referring to what I'm assuming to be the powered by possibility strategic plan. So now that we're mapping out a new strategic plan, how can we keep everything aligned?
Yes, it's a great question. So it's actually one that we actually had a conversation with the auditors about because initially they're like, well, your district improvement plan that you're working on right now doesn't always reflect right now what the last strategic plan was. And what we had to share was is because that work paused and now the board has different priorities. So they could see the connections there. What we're doing now in our design, and actually we finished one of our first stabs at it today, is develop a district improvement plan. And then when the strategic plan is adopted, go back and make sure that there's complete alignment there. And we will then use that information to derive our practice next time, next, during the next school year. So all, the, the process that they're talking about here, for example, in our district improvement plan, the fact that we have a plan that's directly aligned to board priorities, that has a cadence of accountability, where we come back and actually monitor our work to see if it's having impact, that they said is really tight. What our work will now be is when you adopt a new strategic plan, to make sure that that consistency maintains. And we will do that.
That's awesome. And do you, have you seen any opportunity yet to take the early recommendations and embed them into the strategic plan as far as your voice in it?
So when we get to the columns in the middle?
Yes.
That's when we will be doing all that, yeah.
That's great to hear. Awesome. And my only other question, you mentioned, you mentioned that one of our strengths, and Mr. Wilbanks mentioned it too, one of our strengths at the elementary level in curriculum was our scope, our structure. But are they, are they also looking at the resources within the documents and are you guys getting feedback about that?
They do, and they give feedback on that. When it comes to specifically in resources at the elementary range, they score you on one to three points and our resources are rated at a 2.9. So they actually gave pretty strong feedback. In secondary, in junior high, it was at a 2.6 and at the high school, it was a 2.8. And I'm giving you the sum. They break that down by content area. So when I, when I mentioned the seven, the six different areas that they look at in curriculum and they score them individually, they actually give you a score for every single one of those six areas by content area. So it allows us to say, in the elementary area, which content area is actually the one that needs more work or in the junior high or the high school, and specifically where's the area that that happens? Now, what I would say is, this doesn't mean that you don't take feedback because remember, this is just what's on paper. They're going to go do interviews and they're going to be asking questions in the fall and visiting with teachers to see, is this actually helping or making an impact for you? And if the feedback is different, they will revise their findings and help us to make sure that we're designing resources that people are finding meaningful and useful, which may alter some of these or it may reinforce it. So I think fall is a really important piece. You know, normally in a curriculum audit, you can do these things back to back. We are doing them in two phases, which is actually kind of helpful. But when you get to the fall part, I think that's going to have a lot of influence over how these things totally land. Right now, they're just looking at paper.
Thank you for answering my questions. And I, I appreciate all the work and thought and collaboration that's going into this. It's, it's an undertaking and it is, I just want to remind anyone watching, it is a deficit audit. We're doing this to find gaps and to address those gaps. And so I'm just grateful for the work that's being put into it because with that and with improving the curriculum and making, making our resources more robust, with that comes trust and with trust comes a tighter fidelity to the curriculum. And that's something that we want to see to, like Mr. Wilbanks' point, to increase guarantee and viable curriculum across the district at all campuses, and we serve many. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. McMurrow. Are there other trustees? Ms. Richardson?
I have a question just because based on the report, this has looked really good. So good that it almost concerns me because we had talked about before, when we do a curriculum audit, that this is going to show the worst of the worst, we need to be prepared for it, we know it's a deficit audit, it's... Where is it? Is it not that bad or is it going to come in the next presentation? Is it, because we've said all along, like, we want to know the really hard and bad stuff. None of this seems terrible. Am I missing it?
Well, there's two things. I can't qualify as something is terrible or good because it's very much drafty. So it's too early to qualify where our total gaps are because there are five areas that they examine and they've only given us feedback on two and they've only done two areas in phase one. There are five areas that have to go through all of it. So when I, when I, when we say a preliminary findings, I, I really have to emphasize preliminary. And the reason being is because all they've had a chance to look at is what's on paper and make, compare that to their rubrics and what they would normally call out. They have to still go see it in practice. They have to interview teachers, they have to talk to principals, they have to interview each one of you. And then they're going to put all that together and adjust their things. I do think that you, we will find in the end that there are some areas that are actually strong. We've been doing a lot of work on curriculum for the last five, six, seven, eight years. Will there be gaps that we have to fill? Absolutely. It's just premature to sit there, it's premature for us at this point at the district level to say this is definitively what the problem is yet because the whole picture isn't there. It's like, we're looking at two slices of a whole pie. We have to see the whole pie.
I appreciate that explanation. I think we had, I think I had prepared so much for something being so bloody, so messy. It was just going to be horrific the first time we saw it. And this is, okay, this is good, this is what we were hoping for, it just isn't as messy. So thank you for helping my perspective and understand what's coming. But to also know that we're not hiding anything.
Oh, no.
This is the very first step. I've talked to many teachers who actually submitted different parts of that writing and the detail they went into to make sure they had the very best, not of their work, but samples to make sure we were getting true look at what's going on in our classroom. So thank you for this and thank you for helping me just realign and strategize what my mindset needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any other comments or questions from trustees tonight for Dr. Wertz? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Wertz.
All right, thank you.
We have one more report on our agenda tonight. That's item D, a report on the legislative impact to educator compensation. Turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Trustees, tonight I would like to invite Holly Stambach and Scott Cale up to the podium. They are going to give us a report on recent legislation that impacts compensation discussions. I want to point out, there is no action item associated with this. This is a report and the report is to simply make sure that we are aware and can ask good questions about the impact of the legislation that ultimately was passed here in the last few weeks so that we know how to take the appropriate next steps for a compensation plan for the future. That compensation plan discussion will come back to the board, I believe it's planned for June the 26th. Tonight is really about laying the foundation of what are the changes that we're experiencing now because of legislation and some key things for you to consider.
Thank you, President Chapa. Thank you, trustees and Superintendent Smith. So the purpose of this is to review legislative updates pertaining to compensation, TRS active care rates and healthcare. As Dr. Smith just mentioned, House Bill 2 recently passed and it's been signed into law. And to summarize that, it's a basic allotment increase of $55. It's a basic cost allotment for $106 for the items listed below that bullet. And then it's also a $45 additional allotment for support staff. Now, the allotments are either based on average daily attendance or enrollment. Additionally, to HB 2 is the teacher retention allotment. And the teacher retention allotment will provide our teachers with three to four years of experience, a $2,500 pay increase, and that will be added to their base pay. And then for teachers with five plus years of experience, it will offer them a $5,000 salary increase. And so we also have some teachers that are considered part-time and if they're, as long as they're working an average of four hours, they'll also be eligible for that teacher retention allotment. So due to this, we're going to have to create a teacher-specific pay scale for those teachers that are earning this teacher retention allotment. Additionally, for the, the support staff allotment, it's not eligible for those teachers that are going to get the teacher retention allotment. It's going to be for those employee groups such as support staff, which include our auxiliary, our clerical, our counselors, our diagnosticians, also our librarians. Those employees are not eligible for the teacher retention allotment, but they are eligible for the support staff allotment. We do have positions that are currently on our teacher pay scale listed here and they're going to have to be moved off our teacher pay scale, either onto a new scale that we create for them or onto the administrator pay scale. So that's something we have to pay attention to. On the May 1st meeting, I shared with you some supplemental recommendations and I'm bringing those back to you again today for our attendance clerks to be regraded to an administrative grade two from an administrative grade one, and also a market adjustment to our athletic trainers because we found that they're below benchmark. Additionally, I shared with you some healthcare alternatives. UEA puts out a report every year and based on the 24, 25 healthcare contributions, AISD is ranked at number 29, which is a little bit above halfway through out of 50. Again, that's based on our 24, 25 healthcare contributions. We don't know what 25, 26 is going to look like yet. So we're ranked 29 and that does include our wellness incentive. The TRS rates were released on June 3rd and as I shared in the last meeting, I anticipated that we could see a 10 to 15% increase and Region 11 is going to see a 10% increase. However, I want to point out that our most commonly used plan is our TRS active care primary. We have about 1,600 employees enrolled in the employee-only plan. So those individuals will see a $49 increase based on the 10% rate increase. Our second most utilized plan is our TRS active care HD and we have about 1,200 employees enrolled in the employee-only active care HD. And so they're going to see about a 51 increase. And that's about half of our medically enrolled population that are, that fall into those two plans. As a reminder, the last district contribution increase was in 21, 22, and that was $31. So based on the UEA chart that I showed you a moment ago, again, we don't know what, what healthcare contributions be for those neighboring districts the next few years. But if we want to move to the top 15 market position, we're going to need to provide a $33 per month increase to our employees. But if we'd like to be in the top 20, top 25 or the top market midpoint, we would need to look at doing a $10 per month per employee increase. Any questions?
All right. Trustees with comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Stambach. Ms. McMurrow.
Thank you, Ms. Stambach. Can you go back to the original slide about the, the teacher retention allotment? So we, I, I think that it was before the substitute of House Bill 2 or maybe it was during those negotiations. One question that I sent in through Dr. Smith was, how, how many of our staff does this actually support? Like the state's coming through with a raise, which we, we honestly needed their help. All districts in Texas needed the state to come through. And my understanding at that time was this wouldn't even give half of our AISD staff a boost. Do we know if that, the bill as it came out in the wash, do we know that if that's number, that number is somewhat still accurate?
So we have approximately 8,100 full-time employees. And for the teacher retention allotment, we have about 4,700 teachers in a, in a recent review of those that might be eligible for the teacher retention allotment. Those are generally coded to PIMS code 087. We do have a few that we believe may have been miscoded and we're looking into those. But it's about 4,700 employees. Now, for the support staff allotment, we have about 3,500 or so support staff employees that would be eligible for that, that $45 per ADA support staff allotment that we're getting. So if you look at the combination of both, you're probably looking at about 75% between the two.
Okay. So it looks like... Okay. So, it looks like... It looks like they covered more from the original content of the bill, but we're still... We're still missing so many of our essential staff from this state boost, and I just... I just wanted to kind of note that, because that's significant. That's not something that I've experienced since I've been on the board, including last legislative session. My other question... Or, actually, this is more of a note to my colleagues, as we consider all of this. I really... I really feel passionate about contributing to the healthcare premium this year. We saw how many of our employees actually draw from TRS active care, and we have to consider why that is. As you mentioned, that forecast is only supposed to go up, and it's gotten really unaffordable for so many of our employees and staff. And so, that's something that I really want to support this coming budget... This coming budget adoption and salary compensation package. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may, can I add one thing on Ms. McMurrow's question, and I think you brought up a really good point. The dollar amount that you see on this slide, for teachers with three, four years' experience, or five-plus experience, that covers Holly... How many staff members did you say?
Teachers coded to 087 is about 4,700. There is a small portion of those, about 10%, that are zero to two years of experience, that are not eligible for that teacher retention allotment.
I wanted to point that part out, and then the second part is, while they did expand the bill, and there is another allotment for support staff allotment, that dollar amount is how much, Holly?
For the support staff allotment, it's about $1.9 million.
So, that $1.9 million, you all remember, as we talk about pay raises, that does not go very far. And so, while we're thankful for the step forward in some of these things, and the expansion of this, I want to be really clear that the... Those dollars don't equate to the percent pay raises that you've all given in the past. And I think it's really important for us to make sure we clarify that. We hear throughout the state right now how much our legislature invested in Texas public schools, but the fact is, not all of that goes the same way it used to go. In fact, we have far more strings attached to things this time, which limits our flexibility and our ability to actually provide some of the raises that you've been used to in the past.
Thank you, Ms. McMurrow. And Dr. Smith, Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, President Choppa, and thank you for those comments, Dr. Smith. The strings, I've never... As long as I've been actively involved with this district and in the legislative process that affects teacher pay, and the... I've never seen anything so convoluted. All to get around, because one chamber of the legislature didn't want to increase the basic allotment. Now, we have three allotments, but yet they don't go far enough for what we and districts across the state are facing in terms of just keeping up with the inflation. One of the things I do want to echo what Ms. McMurrow said about the need to increase our contribution to the health plan, and the ABC allotment, if I'm correct, that's the one that actually spells out that we can use that for increases to our insurance. And so, I think now's the time to really look at that and see where we can be more competitive, because, you know, Ms. McMurrow pointed out, we do have a lot of employees that are opting out, and insurance has just gotten so unaffordable for a large majority of our employee base. So, I would echo her sentiments on that, and I was going to point out, but Dr. Smith beat me to it, the other two allotments just don't go far enough to make a dent in covering others that are not covered by this very generous increase for our teachers, which is only half of our employees.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I have Ms. Fowler next.
Thank you, President Choppa. So, I have a question. You mentioned that some people have been miscoded. Does that mean that we will get more that will be eligible for the 25 or the 5,000, or does that mean there's going to be less people that are eligible for those increases?
So, the ones that are eligible are only going to be classroom teachers that are true 087. We have a small portion, I don't know exactly what that number is, but a handful, that our customer service team is looking at, because it appears they may have been miscoded, such as interventionists. So, they would not be eligible for the teacher retention allotment, but that number that may have been miscoded is small. So, when we look at our total population of 087 PIMS coded, it's about 4,700 teachers, and probably 10% or less of that are teachers that are zero to two years. They're not eligible for the teacher retention allotment either, but they would be eligible for the support staff allotment.
Okay. And the people that are now not eligible, because they've been miscoded, when will they be notified?
The reports we're looking at, they don't know that they're on those reports, they don't know that coding, that state reporting that goes directly to the state. So, how we'll report out is we'll have our groups that will say, these are the employees that will stay on the teacher pay scale, and these are the employees that will have to go onto a separate pay scale that won't include the teacher retention allotment, whether that's the administrative pay scale or a new pay scale that we create for them, and we'll communicate that in our compensation plan.
That sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And is it... Is it true that the money that the state's giving us, the 2,500 and the 5,000, are they only giving us that for two years?
They have not told us what future funding will look like. So, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what will go beyond the two years as of today.
Okay, because I was under the impression that they would only give us that money for two years, and then it's up to us to continue with that or not. And it's not looking like our budget will allow us to continue that after the two years that they give us money, or however long they give us money.
I think there's... We have some clarification on that. The way the law is written, it is designed to continue moving forward. The challenge with that is, is that all depends, and we've seen this from our legislature in history, when budgets become tight, where do they look to cut? In public schools, if you just harken back to 2011, you know what happened back then. So, I think that is where a lot of the skepticism comes in right now, is how do you... Answering the question, how does the state continue to fund the property tax cuts that they're talking about, the increases in certain areas that they're talking about, a voucher program that they've implemented, or they will be implementing now? And eventually, we know that the economy will tighten, and I think that's where everyone's fears are right now.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Any other trustees with comments or questions? I have a few. Can we start going back to the slide? I think it's the slide before this one. So, I... I mean, you gave some context here, but I... And I'm going to use slightly different numbers, because that's what I'm familiar with during the legislative session. And Dr. Smith touched on this a bit, but the legislature is selling this as a historic investment in public education, but it is only historic because they have historically shafted us for the last six years. So, you know, I... Just to put this in some context, when we went into this legislative session, we were very clear that we needed $1,400 to the basic allotment. We needed a $1,400 increase in the basic allotment to get us back to the purchasing power we got in 2019 with HB Three. What we got, when you... If you look at just the basic allotment increase we ended up with, we only got $55, which is, we needed $1,400 to get back to the discretionary purchasing power we needed in 2019. So, we only got a fraction of that. They're going to say, and they're correct, well, we created these other buckets of money for you. And there's two things on that. One is, you created buckets of money that you tied strings to that didn't exist before. And so, yes, you gave us more money, and we were desperate, so like, we're, yes, thank you, sir, we'll take whatever we can get. But it creates enormous inefficiencies in our system now that we have, for many years, you know, tried to efficiently address in many ways, and I'll come back to one of those in a minute. So, there's the buckets issue, but there's still the issue of, if you add all the buckets together, we are over, I think, close to $1,000 short of probably where we needed to be. Maybe it's $800. I haven't done quite the math, but we are far, far short of the money we needed to get us back to the purchasing power we had in 2019. And they know that they didn't give it to us, and we've been here with historic inflation. And now, at the same time, there's a historic rainy day fund that the state's been pointing to, that they are using to further a lot of their legislative priorities, but that rainy day fund built up between 2019 and now, in part because, in large part because, they shafted public schools. And that's why that money built up, is because they weren't giving us money to be able to do the things that we needed to do. So, now, they didn't give us the money we needed to have the purchasing power back to 19. They've attached a ton of strings that didn't exist before, that are going to create a whole bunch of problems for us. And now, we have this pass-through thing where teachers are going to get a raise, some teachers are going to get a raise, and that's great for teachers. I mean, we've done very well in this district, I think, for many years, of trying to prioritize educator pay in this district, but we've tried to do it for all of our staff. And what the state did here is, they set aside, I believe, around $4.5 billion for classroom teacher pay raises, and... Which is a good chunk of our employees. But we have thousands of more employees that are not classroom teachers, and how much did the state set aside for those folks across the entire state? $500 million. And so, the number you used, to give some perspective here, is, in Arlington ISD, which is a big district, we're getting $1.9 million from the state for raises for everyone in our system who is not a coded classroom teacher. And so, this creates many, many problems for us, but if we can go to Slide Six, one of the problems we're going to run into now is, the state historically has considered many different types of folks who interact with students as teachers, that we all, many districts, most districts, put into the teacher pay scale, librarians, counselors, diagnosticians, we've got coordinators, instructional coaches. I will again mention librarians, because we have one at every campus, and that's something that I hope we can commit to keep doing, but this makes it very difficult to do. So, now we have to pull these folks out of the teacher pay scale. We have to find a way to treat them differently. I imagine a problem we're going to run into is, how do we keep them on parity with pay with teachers, because they're going to be on a different pay scale, but they're not going to be eligible for this pass-through stuff from the state. So, to make them whole, we're going to have to come up out of pocket for that, but to keep them, if we wanted to do that, to keep them at parity with teachers, we have to pull from the very, very tiny, small bucket that's for everybody else, and disproportionately give raises to these people. So, that's an incredible inefficiency now, where we're having to go through our system and find buckets of money that frankly don't exist, so we can treat people with parity who even the state has, up until this session, considered to be the same as teachers. And so, I mean, the... We're grateful for the money, but this puts districts in such a bind, and I'm not looking forward to the decisions that we're going to have to make as a result of the lack of trust, frankly, that the legislature is showing in local school districts to govern themselves and decide how to best spend their money and treat their employees. That's frankly where we've gotten now, is we've got some folks in Austin who want to be school board members, but they don't get paid if they're not school board members. But they want to tell us exactly, now to this point, they're telling us exactly how we're supposed to, what PIMS numbers we can spend money on for staff. And it makes it... It's already hard to treat people equitably. We've done a very good job, Mr. Cale, Ms. Stambach, and this district, y'all have been an incredible part of that, but it is going to make it so difficult going forward to do that for everyone. And so, while I'm grateful for the teacher money, this has really created a bunch of problems for us, I think, and at the same time, it doesn't solve the budget issues that we were going into 20... Into this session with, that we knew that we needed the help on, the magnitude's just not there. So, with that, I will probably save until the next meeting the question of, like, how do we work with these folks? Because, you know, at a certain level, we're not going to get folks to want to be librarians, or, you know, avid coordinators, if, in many ways, they're interacting with students like teachers. I mean, our librarians do so much with... I mean, if you think a librarian is just there to, like, manage library books, I would invite you to come see what librarians do today in today's schools. I mean, they very much are teaching and educating students, but if we, you know, folks aren't going to want to do those jobs if leaving the classroom means that they take a pay cut. So, that's a problem that we're going to have to address going forward. That's all I have. Ms. Fowler, I will go back to you. Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Choppa. Just looking at this list, and my eyes instantly go to the librarians. The PIM says anyone that teaches four hours or more is considered a teacher. Librarians teach all day long. That's what they do. They don't check books in and out. They're teachers. The same thing with the avid coordinators. They teach all day long. Instructional coaches, that's what they do. That's what just infuriates me, that the state is putting us in a position where we have to tell some people, yeah, you're considered a teacher, and you get a raise. Oh, no, you're really not a teacher, when they are, in fact, teachers. And it's just infuriating that they've put us in this position. And I know there's going to be so many of these people that are disappointed, probably even a little bit angry, that they're not getting the raise, and they are teachers. And I don't know what to do about that, other than, you know, keep working with our legislators, but it's just... It's not fair, and it puts us in a very bad position, that we have to tell them, no, you don't get the money, when they are teachers. All of these people are teachers. They're working with students all day long, and I just don't know what the answer is, but I'm angry about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. And I will just point out, because I forgot to leave it out of my earlier tirade, the same legislature, right? So, they're hoping that this money that they're giving to teachers, and again, I don't want to... I hope no one, you know, misunderstands me and thinks that these teacher raises are a bad thing. I think they're a great thing. But it's noticeable what the legislature did. Like, that's the sugar to help the medicine go down on the ESA side, because those ESAs are coming with $10,000 per kid, and those private schools have zero strings attached to those ESAs on what they can spend the money on, and now we have strings attached to everything essentially that came with this bill, with some exceptions. But if you just look at the basic allotment, we get $55 extra for a kid now that we have discretionary control over, and the private schools are getting $10,000. That's incredible.
And President Choppa, if it's okay, if I could just add one comment to your points, that zero-to-two-year teacher lack of funding in the teacher retention allotment is also not insignificant. What we know from data, not just in our school district, but across school districts, is that those teachers that are most likely able to be recruited are in the zero-to-five-year range. And so, by not including the zero-to-two-year teachers in a period of time when the market has a woeful amount of applicants available in the first place, now that supplemental budget has to cover the zero-to-two-year teachers just to stay competitive, to be able to recruit effectively, to fill the jobs that we have just with standard attrition. So, that is also not covered, as I know you know that, but that exacerbates the issue and the point that you were making.
Yeah, and thank you for pointing that out, and that is absolutely intentional. I mean, Commissioner Morath has been going around the state's dumping for years now, wanting to move to a more elevated pay scale, in which years zero, one, two, three, and perhaps more are held essentially to a plateau, and then with a sharp elevation afterwards. And we can, at some point, you know, debate the merits of that, I mean, I think there's pros and cons to that, but that is something specifically he has been pushing for, so I'm not, especially with this legislature, surprised that that aspect of his view of compensation is eventually working its way into bills that the legislature are passing. Dr. Smith?
I wanted to take a minute, first of all, to thank Scott and Holly for putting this together. While we hate to be the bearer of good and bad news in a presentation, we did want to be really clear about what the legislation is actually funding us for, and what that means for Arlington ISD. We also want to make sure that we thank our board in previous administration for investing in pay raises over a number of years, because you've put us in a position where we're extremely competitive in the market in DFW. And I think that's a definite asset, and not only have you done that, but you've managed our money so well that we have a perfect first rating in the state of Texas, and that's the accountability rating for how we handle our finances. So, thank you to our board in our previous administration for putting us in a position where we know some of our colleagues across the state are frankly not in those same positions, and we're proud to be here. The challenge now comes in the next couple of weeks, when we have to start making decisions about compensation, and it can't be the same way we've always done it. And we appreciate the effort that our board has put in in the past, and we know that we've got some big, tough decisions ahead of us, and we appreciate you leaning into those discussions coming up.
All right. Mr. Cale, Ms. Stambach, thank you so much. All right, we are now moving on to the next portion of our agenda tonight. We have a public hearing on the 2025-2026 budget and tax rate, and We have a public hearing on the 2025-2026 budget and tax rate, and so, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Smith and hear from our staff on our proposed 2025-26 budget and tax rate. Dr. Smith?
I believe I get to welcome Alberto Rivas up to the podium now, and we're grateful for his work and Darla Moss's work to get us to this public hearing this evening. So thank you, Alberto.
Good evening, Board President Chapa, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Smith. Before I start, I do want to acknowledge two of our staff members that are here in the audience. We have our Director of Budget, Ms. Shina Jocelyn, and our Executive Director of Financial Services, Ms. Bridget Lewis. They play an integral part in the day-to-day aspect of the way all these numbers, little by little, begin wrapping up to the presentation you're going to see. So the purpose, I publicly love having a lot of pictures with students. I will tell everybody, I believe we're here because of them. Our roles in this building are to support schools and campuses because they're supporting our kids. I am a product of public schools, and I do believe in public schools. So the purpose is to kind of go over the timeline to discuss the budget and the tax rate. And on this table, you'll see several items, several dates, several pieces that kind of lead us up to where we're at today. So there has been workshops, there has been presentations, we have received preliminary values from the TAD. An advertisement did go out in the newspaper, and then today is where there will be a public meeting to discuss the budget and proposed tax rate and the adoption of the tax rate, I mean, the adoption of the budget, because our fiscal year begins on July 1st. And then there's three big items that are still pending. We don't receive our certified values from the TAD until July 25th, and then, once TA receives those values from all school districts, they determine maximum compress rates. That's when the state buys down or reduces tax rates, and then we adopt the actual tax rate in September. So we're adopting a budget based on preliminary values for property and tax rates. On this next slide, this is the first half of the budget. This is the revenue side. It's kind of like a dashboard. It's your revenue inputs. Up top, you see just a brief history on the enrollment and how it's changed year over year. The chart on the bottom shows you the tax rate history. So you see the darker portion being the MNO and the lighter portion being the interest in sinking based for the bonded debt. So you see, you do see a gradual decrease there because of tax rate compression. And then, on the right-hand side, you see a table which is the basic allotment, and it's kind of charted out by years. So you see four years at the very bottom, 2010 through 2013, and it goes up for two years, and then it stays consistent again for the next four years, 2016 through 2019. And then it goes up again in the fiscal year 2020. That's when House Bill 3 came out. That's when there was a significant increase in the basic allotment. It went up by about $1,000, and it stayed the same for about six years. And then, as it was reported in the previous presentation, it went up by $55 for the next two years. There is a couple of notes there just as to what the assumptions were used in developing the budget. Enrollment history, we are including a decrease in enrollment for next year's budget of about 2.5%. Tax rate history, on this graph at the bottom, you see the same tax rate, but because of compression and because of the proposed increase of the home sit exemption, that number should be lower, and we'll have a better figure for that in September. And then finally, the last one, as part of the first accountability rating, we're supposed to kind of prove out to the state that we're sharing changes to local, state, and federal funding with our boards. This next one, this next slide is the next half of the budget, which is the expenditure outputs. So on the left-hand side, you see two tables. They both have the expenses for the last audited year, which is fiscal year '24, but they're broken out in different categories. The top table is split out by the actual category, meaning payroll, professional, and contracted services, supplies. And then the bottom table is showing the same numbers, but by functional area. The board adopts the budget at the functional area. So the top table shows you about 86% of our money is tied in payroll, and the bottom table shows you that about 61% of our money for that fiscal year went towards direct instruction. On the right-hand side for this current year, it shows you, it was also mentioned in the previous meeting, how strong of a starting teacher pay scale we have. We are second in the area. And then just a little note at the bottom saying that there is a teacher retention allotment coming up. When you put both of those slides, both of those dashboards together, and you want to kind of chart what that history is, that's what this next slide shows you. Up top, you see revenues, expenditures. You see revenues in blue, expenditures in darker gray. And so, you see several years where, because of the way funds were managed, the surplus was built. And then you see notes at the bottom that kind of help explain where and why that was. When there were school closures, there was a savings and expenditures, and then Esther Funding kind of kicked in for several years in a row, and then there was also Vader election that helped increase revenue sources. And then on the right-hand side, you see a table of what that total fund balance is. So in some years, there was a deficit that was realized, and several years, there was surpluses that were realized. And you kind of see that bottom line number at the right, which is your total fund balance. So you kind of see an increase, and then it shows a calculation, days of expenditure. This is, if you take the total expenditures for that year and you divide it by 365 days, that's about how many days the district has in reserves. This is very important because of, it affects your bond credit ratings, and it affects your first rating. General recommendation is two to three months, depending on the first rating indicator, somewhat 75 days, somewhat 90 days for the full. So anywhere where we're at right now, 150 is really, really good. Strong position. This next slide kind of dives a little bit into legislative changes. So there was a huge increase in the total money going to public head, but it is very delineated in how it can be spent, and this table kind of shows what it's for. The only one that really has no delineation is the increase in the basic allotment, because if you look at the ABC allotment, it says it's 106 per enrollment, and it tells you what you can spend the money on, so we have to track it a certain way. The school safety allotment, it doubled to about $20 per day, and the allotment per campus went up to 33 million. So for that line, the TAD estimate is estimating us at 1.8 million more in funding for school safety. For currently, our funding for school safety is about 1.5 million, right? So together, that's going to get us a little under 4 million, yet our costs, our SROs and armed securities this year is about $7 million. So this is one of those allotments where I, the way I describe it is, it's funding that is catching up to inflation, it's funding that is catching up to things we're already doing. Early learning programs, same thing, similar concept there that is paying for full-day pre-K, and you have money tied to special pops because those are tied to the basic allotment. There is a note on the right-hand side regarding the funding formulas. This bill was approved for this biennium, so there is a mandated pay raise for the first year, and that pay raise is simply just sustained for the second year. It's not a pay raise on one year, followed by a pay raise the following year. What happens in the following biennium is not known. Another note, there's a lot of smaller details that did go into this bill. One of them, as an example, is the bilingual allotment. Previously, we were only allowed to charge, even though we have bilingual teachers and we're generating funding from bilingual students, we were only allowed to charge the stipend, the bilingual stipend. This bill is actually changing that, where we're now being allowed to charge the entire bilingual salary of a teacher. So there's a lot of little changes in the bill. And then another key point I want to mention with this is SROs and pre-K. 20, 30 years ago, nobody would have thought to have, that there would have been money for SROs and money for pre-K. So this is kind of showing us, we're going to have to reimagine the way our schools are designed based on the funding delineation that we are receiving by the state. This next slide shows the assumptions that have gone into the budget. It shows enrollment, it's showing a decrease from one year to the next. It's showing values. Right now, the preliminary value for this upcoming year is 43 billion. Those typically will decrease a little bit more once we get final certified values in July. It's showing a small decrease in the MNO rate. This final number won't be available until the MCR rate is approved by TA in early August. And then it's showing staffing levels by funding source and as of certain days, just to kind of show how those are changing. And the estimated cost to some of those vacant positions, which is at about $27 million at this point. When you wrap up all the information, the assumptions, and the funding, we end up with this slide, which is the general fund budget. So here, there's three columns, adopted budget, amended budget, and proposed budget. So even though on the previous slide, total increase in funding was 33, was approximately $33 million, under revenues, you're only seeing an increase of about $15 million. Reason being is because there is a decrease that is built in because of a decrease in enrollment. So had enrollment stayed stagnant, had it stayed the same, I mean, then you would have seen the 601 be closer to the 633. But because enrollment was decreasing, the 601 drops to about 585, and then it goes back up to about 615 with the revenues from HB3. On the payroll side, on the bottom, for salaries and expenditures, and then for campus departments, campus and department expenditures, you see differences as well. Under campus and department expenditures, we did begin reducing spending levels, starting with this building, and that number came in at about $3.5 million, which shows the 85 to the 82 million. Salaries and benefits, the note in here is, we are budgeting the full $27 million in vacant positions at the moment, until we see the wider their eyes. And once compensation is approved, then this budget will be amended, and the levels will kind of begin decreasing. So as we realize savings and we calculate where the actual pay raise ends up and compensation plan changes, then the expenditure side of the budget would begin to get adjusted. A couple notes at the bottom, we just have to adopt a budget before July 1, and then there's a specific pot of money, accelerated instruction, we just have to have a note saying that it is part of the general fund budget, so it is being budgeted for. There's three more funds that are up for adoption as well, debt service, capital projects fund, and food service fund. And so, they're laid out here on this slide. Under the debt service fund, you see a star next to the local revenue. That is because the home sit exemption is going to go up. So once that goes up, local revenues do come down, so this will be revised once we have those figures after the tax rate is adopted. Local capital outlay, it shows a total expenditures of 341 and local revenue of only 17 million. So it shows a huge deficit, but the way accounting is reported, when you issue out a bond issuance, it's recorded as another, as an other resource the year it is issued out. So as you work and spend the money, the money is budgeted, but you don't see the money coming in every year because the money came in in year one. So that's why there's a note at the bottom saying that even though there is 381 million here at the end of the last audited fiscal year, that fund had $480 million in available fund balance. And then finally, the debt, the food service fund. If you compare this one to current year amended revenues, you do see a decrease. You also see a decrease in the deficit position of it. There has been about 20 positions that have been closed, and there's been a tweak to some of the calendar workdays for the staff to try to, that has decreased that deficit from 1.8 million to 1.3 million. And then, this last slide just kind of shows all those funds by function. One of the highlights here is under functioning 11, 11, 12, and 13, when you add all three of those, that's everything that is tied to instruction, that is still coming in at 61% of the total budget. If you take the total budget of $685 million under total expenditures, you divide that by 365, there is about, the district is operating at about $1.8 million per day. So then, if you take that amount and you split it out over the 270, 269 million in fund balance, there's about 143 days in fund balance. And then you see transfer in and outs between the general fund and the capital projects fund. Finally, the taxpayer impact. On this slide, you'll see the changes in the tax rate over the years, and then just a note saying, please stay tuned, the tax rate adoption will be held in September. Finally, review and outlook. These, a lot of these have been presented before. Expenditure reductions, revenue opportunities, and then just kind of the FFC's voice. Here, as there's less kids and there's less support staff, there's less teachers and positions that are tied to students, you should also begin to see less positions that are not tied to students because there's less support staff supporting them. So in order to keep the 61% or the 60% in expenditures towards instruction, as those levels decrease because we have less students, you should begin seeing decreases across all the other functions as well. That would mean we're rightsizing outside of the classrooms as well. And then just finally, forthcoming, there is a strategic plan that is being developed, staffing studies underway, and then there's still just a lot of guidance that is coming out regarding HB2 that just got approved. That concludes my presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Just a reminder for trustees, this is a public hearing, so what we'll do on this is, we will open and close our, or close our public hearing if there's no speakers on it, and then we'll move on, and we can address comments and questions on the budget in the first action item. So we have, at this time, I will open the public hearing on the proposed 2025-2026 budget and tax rate at 10:03 PM. Ms. Acosta, do we have any speakers registered for our public hearing tonight?
President Chapa, we do not.
Okay. Seeing no speakers present either, we will also close the public hearing on the 2025-2026 budget and tax rate at 10:03 PM, and then we will just segue right into our first action item for tonight, which is Item A, which is to consider approval of adoption of the 2025-2026 budget for the general fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, and child nutrition fund. Trustees, are there comments or questions on the budget tonight, proposed budget? Ms. Richardson?
I have one. Do we, I know you've dealt with a lot of information that is constantly changing over a very limited amount of time, and we've watched it happen with you. So trying to look forward to what could happen in the future, do we have a contingency plan if the state does not sustain or fully fund the new allotments after our fiscal year of '26, '27?
We do not.
I know, I'm asking you to look into like a crystal ball, because they have put us in a vice right now.
I'll help with that, because I think Alberto's probably thinking, oh, how do I answer that one? The answer to that is simply, we are going to be in a really bad spot. And, you know, we, what they've done is they have forced our hand on how we spend money, so then if they take that money away at the end, we are going to face similar or worse situations as 2011 in the state of Texas. And I think that that is the concern that everyone has on their mind. Again, this bill that was passed really dictates how we spend money and really pushes us on that, and so, that absolutely limits our ability to have contingency plans.
I am very frustrated that it feels like we're being set up to fail, public education as a whole, not just us, but education completely, that with these types of decisions being made, in a perfect world, we would be able to sit down with these legislators and say, let us show you in black and white what you are about to do to us. I really believe they could get it if they would have the opportunity to see it and understand it. I'm sad to say that I don't feel like they care. They care when we're there in front of them, and they say all the right things to our face. We watched it this year when we went down to go visit with them, and they hear us, they understand, but yet, when it comes time to it and they vote, the proof is in the actions, not their words anymore for me. I'm really disappointed, mainly because it's our students and staff, it's you and administration, your colleagues who are trying to figure this all out. But it seems like we're being set up to fail. It seems like they don't understand school finance. As President Chapa said, it also seems like they want to sit on the school board, but yet they don't want to take this job because you don't get paid for it, it's a volunteer job, but you want to tell us what to do. One of the things that we heard over and over this legislative year was state, local control matters. We hear that all the time in the state of Texas. My goodness, we are down in San Antonio this week, and remember the Alamo, and we want to talk about what things are personal and local to us. Well, local control to us looks like giving us money and letting us put it where we need it, where we know what to do with it. And instead, we have people who don't understand school finance, they don't understand And instead, we have people who don't understand school finance, they don't understand where we need our money or why we need it, and they don't have the time to care or understand. All of that to say, I understand we don't have a contingency plan because we don't know what they're going to do, but I think we have to be careful and we have to be transparent, especially with our stakeholders, that we are not wanting to make bad choices, we are not wanting to set up anyone for failure, but here we are left cleaning up the mess and trying to make do with the very best we have while giving our very best at the same time, and that's almost near impossible.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Mr. Mike?
What I've noticed in this, the presentation and this budget proposal, it looks like we've got a higher amount that we have to pay for recapture as well, that's been allotted in. And I believe this budget does not include any potential health insurance increases or any other pay raises for other employees who are not coded in that specific PMS, so it's going to dig us into an even deeper hole. But the one question I have, because you hear it, and you hear people say that we just need to cut things and manage our budget better, and you may not be able to answer this, someone else may be able to answer, is there more that we can cut to get us into a better position with the budget, with what we have?
Yeah. So over the course of the year, we're going to have to make some really tough decisions because, as Mr. Rivas mentioned, we have to continue to work to right-size things. So while there are things that we don't want to cut, we're going to have to start exploring those. We are currently looking at all of those lists and looking at vacancies and trying to figure out which vacancies actually directly impact students, and making sure that we hire those, and we'll continue to refine those lists along the way. The, and the reason I mentioned it when Ms. Richardson asked about the contingency plan is, none of those decisions are going to feel good. And if, if everyone remembers back to twenty-eleven in the state of Texas, it was before I was here, but I, I continue to hear the impacts when the state cut five billion dollars in funding from public schools in the decisions that districts had to make at that time. And we are going to have to make some extremely tough decisions as a school district over the course of this year to continue to right-size our district, to actually fend off the things that we're facing, the things like a lack of funding from our legislature, the things like declining enrollment in a school district, and the things like increasing costs because of inflation. So those, we absolutely have some ideas about some next steps that we're going to have to be working on over the course of the year. We're grateful that we don't have to do it at this time in trying to make thoughtful decisions because, again, you've seen the headlines across the state, some districts were forced into significant staff layoffs before ever getting to budget adoption this year. And we wanted to make thoughtful decisions over the course of the year and not, not just make knee-jerk decisions, and we're grateful for the position our board put us in to do that.
That, that just brings me to my next point about, I think, our role as trustees and this community of Arlington as a whole. We've been very adamant about certain things that we have done and not done, but I think in the next upcoming months, when these studies get through with, for instance, the TIA that I know is a very tough issue for the community, the teachers and respective colleagues, but we're going to have to make some hard decisions. And if the state will continually not give us what we advocate for, then we're going to have to look elsewhere on how we can bring in additional funds to help pay teachers. We're going to have to look at, you know, the consolidation, looking at borderlines, you name it. I think everything is open in the air because this is not sustainable. I think if we're consistently in a deficit and we're consistently eating our fund balance away, and we can't count on Austin to give us exactly what we ask for, then, yeah, nor even close to what we ask for because they're, I won't say that on, I'll get myself in trouble. But what I will say is, you know, we're going to have to keep an open mind and explore all options to make sure that we take care of the teachers and the support staff in this district, but also ensure that our future, our children are taken care of. We can't provide them a world-class education on pennies, and we're doing the best that we can, and anyone who's watching, elections matter, like who you vote for matters. I think at this point, you have to look at the people who are set on ensuring that Texas and our communities succeed versus how they're going to succeed personally.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Any other comments or questions from trustees on the proposed budget tonight? Okay, I have just a few things I'd like to point out. If we could go to the slide, I think it's slide five, it's the revenues to expenditures history. Well, while they're working on that, I'll start by pointing out, Mr. Rivas, that you, throughout your presentation, have put in, you know, you finance folks, and we lawyers, we have something in common, and that sometimes things that are really important, we bury in the footnotes, but they're there because we want to show that it's there, right? So you've got a couple of those through here that I just want to point out. You know, on one slide, you've mentioned the House Bill Two guidance from TASBO, which is, if I may summarize, is like, like tap the brakes and slow this down and wait on guidance from TA, TEA, because so much happened at the last minute. Like, we are literally, y'all are getting guidance almost daily on how to implement the bills that passed in the last few days of the legislative session, some of them with very important implications for what we're doing. You've also got a note in here on the vacant, vacant position cost, and so that's something I want to, you know, I may come back to in a minute, but you've noted that built into this budget, it, we're holding place for some positions that, as you noted, are going to, they're vacant now, we may need some of them, we may not, and as we remove some of those vacant positions, we're actually going to realize cost savings, and that deficit number that's shown here is going to decrease. So it's there. And I'm going to come back to that point now that we've got that slide up. So I, something I think is really important from this slide to note, because folks who, having, having done this for a while now, even before I was on the board, that there's a pattern in how folks think about budget adoption for schools. And, and we're very different than other taxing entities because our, our finance system for us doesn't work like other government entities in Texas. So like, when you, when somebody gets their property tax bill, and it says, I'll just, you know, to pick on, let's pick on Tarrant County College, right? So when it says Tarrant County College, and there's a number, that money goes to Tarrant County College. Or, or let's say it's City of Arlington, because they recently redid how they do funding, so let's not pick on Tarrant County College, just do City of Arlington. Whatever the City of Arlington number is, that's what Arlington gets. With Arlington ISD, when you see Arlington ISD, we don't get that money. That money goes to Austin, they fund it, they put it through all the complicated school finance formulas and everything else, and, and based on that, that's what we get in terms of, of our revenue. But we're also in the position of the way that the finance system works, that we have to adopt budgets during a time of year where a lot of variables that go into the amount of money that we're going to get over the next year, and what resources we're going to need, and what we're going to spend, are still up in the air, but we have to do it every year. And so I just want to point out, if you look at the lines across the middle of the screen here, you've got revenues, expenditures, surplus, and deficits. This is going back to the eighteen nineteen year. In every year, up into the very minor surplus, or deficit that we've run very recently, which are essentially in my mind with a six hundred-plus-million-dollar budget, I mean, those are essentially sort of rounding error-type numbers. If you go back to eighteen, we realized surpluses in every one of those years, substantial surpluses, and I was on the board then, and I can tell you, we adopted deficit budgets in each one of those years, and we got a lot of flack for it. And this hap, this, that happened to boards pre-existing my time here. A deficit budget would get adopted, things would work, you know, as things became clearer over the course of the year, decisions were made, would end up in a surplus. That's why we are, as Dr. Smith said earlier, we are so fortunate to be in the position we're in because we've been so conservative at managing our finances for such a sustained amount of time. We have a fund balance that's allowed us to have the runway to make hard decisions, to navigate this period of time where school finance is so uncertain, without having to take drastic actions like close schools and lay off staff. We've been very fortunate for that because of the way we've managed it. So I don't want folks to, to think, because this happened last year, if you go back to last year, we adopted a twenty-five-plus-million-dollar deficit budget, and that was the headline. The headline was Arlington adopts twenty-five-million-dollar deficit budget. And I'm, and, and I love Fort Worth report. I hope the headline is not Arlington adopts thirteen-million-dollar, you know, deficit budget, because without the perspective on how that gets calculated and what's going to be done over the next few years, or the next few months, like, it's, it's a number that we're required to adopt, and as you've put in here, we don't even know with the home state exemption that passed at the end of the legislative session, how that's going to impact these numbers. We don't know when we get to August and we actually have our enrollment, you know, how many of these vacant positions we're going to get to take off the board. I mean, last year, we adopted a twenty-five-million-dollar budget deficit, and then I think it was by the end of November, we knew just from eliminating vacant positions alone, we essentially closed almost that entire gap, just with that step. So there are very difficult decisions ahead, and I don't want to downplay that, and, and we're going to have to make them to stay out of a sustained deficit scenario. But I don't want anybody watching, or anybody here, to think that we are adopting a thirteen million-dollar deficit tonight, and that is somehow an indication of recklessness on the part of the district, or a, a lack of appreciation for fiscal responsibility, because this district has been one of the most fiscally conservative districts in the state for a very long time. We have a perfect first rating, and we have a long history of, because of how school finance works, we have adopted deficit budgets and done a very good job of either realizing a surplus or having a fractional deficit that, against a almost three-hundred-million-dollar fund balance, is, it's something we can handle. Like, we don't want to make habits of these things, right? Like, we can't do this indefinitely, as Mr. Mike and Dr. Smith and you have, have all said, or very strongly suggested tonight, the hard decisions are coming. If for no other reason than, as I mentioned earlier, we needed fourteen-hundred dollars per student on the basic allotment just to get to the purchasing power we had six years ago, and we, we didn't get that. We got, we got a very modest portion of that. And that means it's going to be harder for us going forward. It's especially going to be hard for a district like us, that where we've had enrollment decreases, and we're just an aging suburban district in that respect. I mean, we're not unique in this respect. I mean, there are districts like us across the state, they're dealing with similar circumstances, but I think we've been very unique in the way that we have managed it so far, and I anticipate we will continue to do that. So, you know, I, I support this proposed budget. I am not at all bothered by the fact that we have not, today on day one, with so many variables up in the air, you know, did, you know, bent over backwards and put ourselves in a position to over-commit to making difficult decisions when we don't have to, so we can have a nice little zero, you know, on the surplus deficit and say we adopted a balanced budget, because we could do that tonight, and it, it's going to change, and we know it's going to change. And so I don't want folks to, to think that's the end-all, be-all, is that somehow there was something not appropriately done en route to adopting this budget because we don't, we're not projecting a balanced budget today, and we're not projecting a surplus. So much is up in the air, so much is up to change, the proof is in the pudding of how we've approached this in the past, and I don't think that we're going to deviate from that, that approach that we've historically had, which is very fiscally responsible. So with that, if there are no other comments or questions, do we have a motion to approve the adoption of the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget for the general fund, debt service fund, capital projects fund, and child nutrition fund?
So moved.
I have a motion for Mr. Willbanks, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second for Ms. Fowler. Trustees, let's move to vote. All seven trustees voting in the affirmative, the motion unanimously carries, we've adopted the proposed budget and tax rate. Thank you, Mr. Rivas.
Thank you.
We have two other action items tonight, items B and C are very similar. They are both regarding the sale or purchase of real property. Dr. Smith?
Trustees, as we have notified you about the potential sale of our property at twenty-four, twenty-four Hedge Apple Drive, we bring this to you for consideration this evening. If you have any questions, I can call Mr. Horn up, but other than that, we ask for your action on this item.
Trustees, are there comments or questions on item B, which pertains to the Hedge Apple Drive property? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the sale of real property locally known as twenty-four, twenty-four Hedge Apple Drive?
Very motion.
I have a motion for Mr. Mike, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second?
No.
Now, I'll give that one to Ms. Fowler. All right, trustees, we'll move to vote on item B. All trustees voting in the affirmative, the motion carries. Item C is the approval of a purchase of real property locally known as thirteen twenty-three West Pioneer Parkway. Do you have any questions or comments tonight on the purchase of real property at West Pioneer Parkway? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the purchase of real property locally known as thirteen twenty-three West Pioneer Parkway?
Motion.
I have a motion for Ms. Richardson, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second for Mr. Mike. Trustees, let's move to vote. All seven trustees voting in the affirmative, item C carries unanimously. We'll move on now to the consent agenda for tonight. Are there any trustees who wish to withdraw items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will withdraw items O and Q. There will be no further consideration on item O. Dr. Smith has requested that, that removal for staff to work on a few tweaks to item O. We'll now move to consider consent minus items O and Q. Do I have a motion to approve consent minus items O and Q?
So moved.
I have a motion for Mr. Willbanks, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second for Ms. Fowler. Trustees, we'll move on now to vote on consent agenda minus items O and Q. All seven trustees voting in the affirmative, the consent agenda minus items O and Q carries unanimously. There will be no further consideration on item O tonight. We will separately consider item Q. I have requested that item Q be removed due to a potential, not an actual conflict of interest, but just the appearance of a conflict of interest between that organization is related to my wife's employer, and so just for the avoidance of any perception of impropriety there, I've asked that it be removed so I can separately vote to abstain. So trustees, unless there's comments or questions on item Q, we'll move to vote. Is there a motion to approve item Q?
Motion.
I have, give that one to Ms. Richardson, is there a second?
Second.
A second for Mr. Willbanks, we'll move on to vote on item Q. We have six trustees voting in the affirmative, and I abstained, that motion carries. Okay. We have already gone through non-agenda forum tonight, we'll move on to superintendent report. Dr. Smith?
Trustees, it's ten twenty-four, I'm going to go quickly because there's some great highlights that I wanted to focus on briefly as we're closing out tonight. First, in our district priorities, the number one thing that our trustees asked us to focus on this year was academic growth, and so I wanted to share just a little bit of information with you. We did receive recently our three-through-eight star scores, and there's some celebrations that I thought you should know as trustees. As you can see in this chart, there's a lot of green, and what, the way this is coded is, a one percent variation or zero remaining the same has no color coding. A light green means you increased in that area, and a darker green means you increased more in that area, and there's a lot of green on this chart. So we're extremely thankful for the work that our teachers and staff did across Arlington ISD this year to see some significant growth in our grades three through eight, and some really exponential growth in some of our Spanish-speaking testing areas. In the same breath, we have some math areas that we're extremely proud of. Again, same color coding applies, the red, darker red includes a bigger drop, the lighter red is a smaller drop, and the green includes progress in those areas, so we're very thankful for the progress that we see. Obviously, we have some things that we'll dive into in fourth grade Spanish and fifth grade English on the math test as well, but again, that's great progress in our school districts, thanks to the work of some amazing staff. Science and social studies, you see on this slide, and you see some significant improvement in science in grades three through eight. And I wanted to point out, I should have pointed it out earlier on all of the slides, we saw some really big bumps in the meats and masters area as well, which tells us that we're continuing to stretch our students and support our students so they're achieving at the highest levels in our district. And you see that our social studies in the eighth grade is, is all in white, which means we're about holding steady in that. I wanted to share that with you as trustees, I know it's been a heavy meeting tonight, we had a lot of important topics to talk I know it's been a heavy meeting tonight, we had a lot of important topics to talk about, but there's a lot of amazing work that's happening in the school district as well, and it's important to note that work. And again, when we're focused on academic growth, there's a lot of good news to be celebrating in Arlington ISD. I know we have kids that are also celebrating because summer break is here, but that doesn't mean I don't have more good things to share about our district and about our students in our superintendent's report this, this week. The third and final week of camp innovation at the CTC wraps up tomorrow. The free week-long camp put on by our technology innovation team gives students in fourth through ninth grades the opportunity to use technology in lots of creative ways, from programming robots to flying drones. Kids come back year after year because they absolutely love it. Our Wimbis World Language Academy has been accepted into the International Spanish Academy ISA network, an educational outreach initiative of the Ministry of Education and Vocational Training of Spain for high-performing dual-language schools in the U.S. and Canada. That was a mouthful. Wimbis is just the second school in Texas to earn the Spanish ISA endorsement, and is now the only school in the entire United States with both the Spanish endorsement and a similar French label. Congratulations to Wimbis World Language Academy. Dual language is obviously a big deal in Arlington ISD, not just at the elementary level. We've talked about the Global Seal of Bilinguality a couple of times this year, and I have an end-of-year tally to share. Seventy-four more high school students recently earned the prestigious seal, bringing Arlington ISD's total to 161 in our first year implementing the program. A special congrats to three students from Martin High School achieved the highest level of recognition, working fluency, by earning perfect scores on their AP Spanish exam. Congrats Nicholas Yep, Jared Hurtado, and Friedrich Brook. I want to tell you about three more students who have already graduated and are now at UT Arlington. Emmanuel Reyes, a Bowie grad, Jada Bostic, a Martin grad, and Joseph Wong, an ACCHS grad, were all recently selected for the McNair Scholars Program, a prestigious competitive program that prepares undergraduates for academic research careers. The students will get the opportunity to work with internationally recognized researchers while refining their analytical writing and communication skills. We are extremely proud of our graduates, and that concludes my report for this week.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We'll move on to trustee reports for tonight. Do we have trustees with reports? I have Ms. Richardson.
One of the things we realized last meeting is that we were all so excited to be here, but also so tired that we forgot to celebrate our graduations. We had a ton of graduations over two-day period. One of the great traditions that happened before I got on the board was that you guys have always taken group pictures with the principals, and there are other administrative staffs, so we can celebrate them. You can see that we also had Dr. Cabasos come back. It was a special day for him to be able to present his son, Diego, with his graduation certificate. We also had several staff members, from Mr. Er, Dr. Upchurch, to Mr. Lynn Nguyen presenting his son with his diploma. It is a busy, busy two days. It's a long two days. It's also one of the best two days, because you are watching kids. It is a culmination of the past 12 years, and getting to see the excitement, the pleasure, and just the pride on their face, but also their families' faces. So I really love these two days we spend together. I also love an excuse to do something different, and this was, I chose not to wear high heels this year, and had an excuse to buy different Nike shoes for all of the different schools. So I told my husband it was a business expense, hopefully he's buying it. Thanks, Spence, for putting it in action, so that way I can tell him that. This past week, we spent the weekend in San Antonio together, being a team of eight, but even that, we were more than a team of eight. We had Dr. Collins with us as well. It was amazing for us to all be together, to be able to go to different sessions, to continue our education. The same way we ask that our teachers continue, continue on and do their education, we do that in that same way as trustees. I don't think people know behind the scenes how many hours and what we put into making sure that we understand what's going on, but it was great to be there with each of you and to enjoy our time together. It's weird when we go days and days together, like at graduations, two days, three to four days at a conference, and then we go three and four days without seeing each other. We almost become like a family, and you want to make sure everybody's okay. So it's good to see you guys tonight. I'm glad we're going to have a break for a few days, but I'm also really proud that we all get to serve together and take this seriously.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there other trustees with reports tonight? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Richardson, Ms. Secretary, do we have any matters reported for further consideration tonight?
We do not.
Okay. Well, all items on tonight's agenda have been addressed, and we have no matters to discuss in closed session, there being no further business tonight. This meeting is adjourned at 10:32.